Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag,
to the Constitution, and to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and one entity, with whose
Okay, Sandy, at this time, if you could please read our mission statement and vision statement and take role.
Sure. Mission statement here is, um, sorry. At Richmond Community Schools says, "At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that powers students to be successful in the global community." And our vision statement is to foster a culture of academic excellence, create the character, ensuring that all students are prepared for success in the ever-changing world. And I will take role call. Board member Cunningham?
Here.
Board member Mashawn?
Here.
Board member Sutton?
Here.
Board member Talto?
Here.
Board member Steyer?
We're here.
Board member Gillis?
Here.
I am board member Fortuna.
I am here.
We do have a quorum and we do have our student board rep, um, Kelsey Captain there with us tonight and then also Liz in the chamber is going to be just a little bit late. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on our agenda, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I mentioned to amend the agenda as presented and remove policies 3115, 3115A, 4201 and make all three of them as their own action item. And adding to 13F for an action item.
Okay, I need a second.
Support.
All those of, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Um, well, first I think in the motion, Candace, you needed to say that you wanted to remove from action 13A those policies. You want to make them now 13F. Because all you did was say the policies, but you got to say where they're, where they're coming from when you're making that motion.
Then I motion to amend the agendas presented and remove policies 3115, 3115A, 4201 from action item 13A and make all three of them their separate action item and add 13F.
Okay, do I have a second?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, how far? Uh, due to increased questions that, um, I feel we would potentially be possibly a closed session with our attorneys to discuss new laws and policies.
You have increased questions? What are your increased questions?
Well, I'm not sure that that is something, is that my questions need to be asked to the attorney?
Okay, I, because I'm just, I'm, the reason I'm asking is because in your email the other day to Brian, you asked about those policies and, um, Brian had, um, with no direction from the board, had supplied us with a whole bunch of, again, rationale from the attorney for those policies. And in your email, you stated that you had concerns about federal guidelines, um, executive orders and the Elliott Larson Act. And in that stuff that Brian sent us, as well as response to your email, those questions were answered. So do you have additional questions?
I do.
This owe you two.
I do have additional questions.
Oh.
And for every one question, there may end up being four more.
Okay, so, so this whole time, so this is like the, the fourth time that we're going through this. You still continue to have more questions other than all of this stuff that we got?
Correct.
And you can't tell us what your questions are that you have of the attorney, aside from what you have talked about going along?
Correct.
And I myself, um, I did see the email responses that, that Brian provided and it still doesn't answer the questions that I originally posed, during the last board meeting that I had specific for the attorney. And then because of the nature of, you know, the closed session, I didn't necessarily want to put it in an email form that could be forwarded and then kind of bring, bring up what was in the closed session, if that makes sense. And so that's why I was looking to go, you know, ask direct to the attorney those questions.
Okay, but at the last meeting, Ray, you didn't say anything about closed session. You said you had questions for the attorney and I thought we asked what those questions were and you didn't really have an answer to what your questions were. So now your questions are from closed session?
My answer was that there were questions directly related to the attorney. And I did mention that there was discussion that came from the closed session and we can't really discuss in, in the, you know, Public Meetings Act here. And there was myself and two other board members that had a different impression of how that discussion went.
Oh, okay.
And so I was just looking for clarification on that.
Okay, I, sorry, I guess I missed that whole of you saying that. Okay, I'm just, I'm just going to say, like I said the last time, I think this has been going on for months. We've had lots of clarification on what these policies are, what these three policies, what the, what the amendments have to do. It's parentheses, it's commas, it has been explained to us ad nauseam. And I just don't see why we need to continue to have our attorney to come back and continue to tell us the exact same thing. So I don't see the point of this.
I will say that I did have questions at the last meeting. I did talk to Brian, um, since he sent the email out, answering some of the questions and then I did, um, talk with him again today. So he sent the follow-up email out with more questions answered. So I do feel like I have had all my questions answered, um, but I want everyone to feel comfortable and have that ability to get their questions answered. So I, I feel like I'm ready to move forward with this, um, policy vote, but it sounds like not every board member is. So I will also respect that they want extra time, maybe you have extra questions, but I did get my questions answered.
Any other discussion on the board?
I, I just wanted to add too, I was kind of curious what maybe Candace's questions were as well because like Sarah, um, I, I wasn't at the meeting because I was sick. But, um, seeing the email from Brian was super, super helpful. The, this whole, all of these policies, names and laws and everything else just gives me a headache. It just confuses the heck out of me. There's so many names thrown around left and right. Um, and I really liked the email that was sent on Thursday with the timeline and the, that, that clarified so many more things in my head. And so I felt like my questions were answered as well. So I, I was just curious what questions you want.
Again, I just, all I'm going to say is, we're going to, this has been months, this is now what, the fifth, fifth or sixth time that we are getting the same questions answered. Now, now you, your email talks about the specific thing and now because you've got those questions answered, now, now you have more. And we're going to cost thousands of dollars to have our attorney come and tell us what parentheses and commas mean and tell us that we're not in danger of losing federal funding, any of this stuff. It's just, it's a waste of time.
I don't think it's the fifth or sixth time. I'm going to go right there.
But if we had one meeting, one meeting.
I don't think, yeah.
We had, we had a meeting in April. We had a meeting in April, that's one. We had the meeting, two meetings in September, that's three. We had the stuff that Brian sent to us, the big, the stuff that he went and talked to the attorney when he had no direction from the board to do it, that's four. We had you asking, sending your email and getting, asking questions about the Elliott Larson Act and the federal stuff, that's five. We had Sarah asking the question, which she asked about the federal funding. That was a question that she wanted to ask last meeting, didn't ask, she got it, ask, that's six. Six coming, six, just let me finish, that's six. Shake your head all you want, but it's six. And now, now you want the seventh time to have, again, the attorney to come back, travel here, spend thousands of dollars to tell us that we are unclear with the parentheses and the commas, guys. Come on.
I'm going to argue that the March one was not, um, nobody here asked, at least I didn't ask for the attorney to come in March. That was something that showed up on the agenda because that was something that I'm assuming Brian and the attorney set up. But the board didn't ask the attorney to come in March when we voted on this. It was a recommendation by them, so they came, that's what started this whole thing. That wasn't the board requesting.
I didn't say it was the board requesting. I'm saying.
But you're making it sound like we have sought this out six times. And I would say that's.
No, 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 I'm sorry. If that's, if that's how you think I'm coming across, it's not. I'm saying that we are going to continue to hear the exact same thing.
Well, maybe, maybe to cut down on the last three that you just said, maybe we should have had a concise direction for Brian because I know Mr. Steyer.
We didn't have concise direction.
I know Mr. Steyer, at the last meeting, did question the federal funding. So when that question didn't come up in the answers that he emailed out, I called and specifically asked and Brian did say, you know, I didn't ask about that. I kind of forgot about it, it wasn't in my notes, which, that's fine. But that then was an extra call. It didn't have to be an extra call. If we could have come together and had a list of questions and that didn't happen, so then it does feel very disjointed and it does cause more times that we have to reach out to our attorney. Because we didn't have our ducks in a row. We had all these piecemeal questions and that does lead to waste.
Sarah for Sharon and even some of yours Candace that came up. But I'm comfortable with what we're doing right now. You know, I think my answers, my questions have an answer.
And we're talking about parentheses and commas. That's what we're battling.
But I think that, and I can't speak for everybody, but when I talked to Brian today, I tried to explain, I don't care the verbiage, the parenthesis, the comma. That's not important to me. It's really not. It's my question was very specific to the attorney. Are we at risk for losing federal funding based on the policy changes that they were advising us to do? Are we at risk? Because I believe at some point in the past, the question, that question was answered differently. On what we should have in there. So now.
It was new stuff at that time.
Right. So now that was my very specific question. We got the answer today that we're not at risk. I wanted that in writing. I know one of Brian's emails said, didn't believe so, or maybe that was our conversation today. And I needed a little more than I don't believe so. I needed a very specific, no, this is not, because it's a sizable amount of money. That we would be at risk for losing. So if the attorney has said we are not at risk for losing any federal funding, I don't care about a parenthesis or a comma or the wording that's in there. I just want to make sure that I have a responsible financial hat on, because that's our job. And make sure that we're not doing something that's going to risk those hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I feel comfortable moving on with this based on my question being answered.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, because Ray's out of the country. We're going to do all of our voting today as roll call votes, so I make sure that I can catch everybody. And anything that we vote from here on out until he returns to us, we will be doing it that way.
Okay.
Okay. So this is going to be a roll call vote. I'm going to start with Candace.
Is this with?
With your, I'm sorry, with, yeah, with your, with the, what you.
Oh, amended.
Amended, thank you. So yes. Okay. Sandy?
No.
Didn't Ray second it?
Ray seconded, you have to go as well.
I apologize. Ray, you seconded. What's?
Aye.
Okay. Now, now, now Sandy.
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Margaret?
No.
I vote aye. The motion, the motion does not carry. So we will be going.
No.
I need a motion now.
We'll make the motion to approve the agenda as originally presented.
Okay, I have first and second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, we're going to do another roll call vote. Sarah. So Margaret?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
No.
Danielle?
Aye.
Mark, I said Margaret. Ray?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda, I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda. Some move. Support. Thank you. Mr. Wongzak, any discussion?
In your, your Friday today, we had a revised personnel report. We added the director of resources to this interview. Couple of the other things I just want to point out. There is a, Tammy McHenry is a substitute teacher. This is a retired school employee and they have to be hired directly through the district. This is on an as needed basis, like a daily sub. We have no long term or anything like that. Christina, Christina Whitkey, lunch aid. Alicia Wilson, Harman? Herman? Anna? It's her main, her married name. Alicia used to work for us as a GSRP program. She's now coming back, so we can add our fifth GSRP last year back. Couple resignations from the Schedule Bs, Ann Gallagher from the First Lego League, Ann Gallagher from the Lego Club, Brett McLeod from the JV softball coach, Gage Calamberger, Eighth Grade Boys Basketball Coach, Karen Smith, Bus Driver. They see some notice of appointments and there too, just kind of. There were no questions regarding the minutes. Claims and accounts, you have your back at the district head town for full time FT count. As you can see, we are up over where we ended the month of the year. Like I said, there was no questions regarding the claims and accounts.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Wongzak?
I'm just, I'm sorry. Um, for the interpretation, um, Bus River, is that through the company that the forces of?
Karen, Karen Smith was a Richmond employee, which led us to have to get those other two from the third party account. Because that was in that mix at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret, did you?
When does, when does the count date? Be as official? When does that number come? November something, right?
It's like at the end of November.
Yeah, it typically do the second Wednesday of November. And then it takes a while for them to process it and audit it. It's that final number to the list of numbers that we later in order. But we will submit our final number to the state the second, the second Wednesday of November.
But, right, but when we do that though, we, we have a very good idea at that point when we have to submit where our number is at, right? In November.
What would make that number different is that we've got, we're the ones that the districts bill us. Because they, they leave after count date.
Section, section 25B.
Section 25B where you might have some changes. Because they might have left to another district and the district will look at us for the days that, because they weren't in their district on count date. But they're now in their district. It doesn't, generally doesn't, or there's a error in auditor or something. They didn't have a, um, ninterlog done correctly or so forth. But generally, that's the number we rely on for what.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the proposal extended trip.
In your packet, you should have the paperwork that Mr. Berg submitted and Mr. Trend and everybody else signed. So I'll turn it over to Greg.
Good. Good for education. I'm here to propose a trip that we take every year down to Ohio. We go down to the University of Pinley for the Roughneck Duels. We leave, like, it's Friday.
September 13th.
September 13th? Good. And then we will stay down Friday night. So we actually leave school. We'll, we'll have the kids come down on Friday, get their stuff. We always get ready and then we leave Friday. Leave at Friday 10 or 11. And then we get there, we weigh in, and then we wrestle five duels on Friday, spend the night. And then on Saturday, we wrestle five more duels and then we come home.
Corrected, it was Friday the 12th.
Friday the 12th?
It's the 13th.
Sorry. That's okay. That's my mistake. So Friday the 12th is when we leave and then we come home Friday the 13th, or Saturday the 13th. Friday the 13th.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Next item is another Florida extended trip to Florida. Mr. Evans.
Hello, everybody. This is probably the, I mean, the fifth time we're going down. It doesn't involve any school time. Kids travel with their parents, go down. I guess I should explain. We want a spring trip down to Florida every year. RBI rents a baseball facility for us to practice at. It's the old Yankees where Babe Ruth, his school training was. We are down there from Sunday to Thursday. Does not interfere with any type of school. Kids aren't required to go down there. It's all, if they want to come down with their parents. They travel with their parents. They get an RB, the RBO, maybe I have to say it wrong. They get a hotel or wherever they want to stay and then we just rent the facility. And we practice or we scrimmage every, every day, usually from nine to 12. Sometimes we get enough kids where you get the JV down there and we have JV teams scrimmaging as well as varsity teams. According to MHSAA, you can scrimmage teams from Michigan. You can't scrimmage anyone from outstate. So we follow the guidelines. But if kids can't go, it's not a big deal. If kids can go, they're more than welcome. RBI funds it all. And the kids, every year I put to the families, at the end of the season, do you want to go to spring trip? They all voted that majority wanted to go. So for a couple of things, like 500 bucks or 600 bucks, we rent a field. And then I carry out all the stuff I need for practice. But it does not involve any school time. This day, probably nothing.
This is over spring break?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because the dates on the thing that was submitted is like a two week span. Make sure, over spring break, so it's a lasting part.
No, we don't leave until school's up. And the kids are required, are asked to be there by Sunday. And then we come home, our last day of practice is Thursday. So allow them to have some family time to do. So if they want to go down early, like a lot of them go to the busy land a couple of days before, we start practicing. So it's really only five days that they're with me, that we're practicing. And then on Thursday, we all ride back to Florida while I drive them back. So we can stay there, so we can fly home. I got to carry all the gear, so no flying for me.
Anyone have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to say out loud that I said over there at the table how impressed I am that you are here in October for a spring trip with the class. I love that, the planning. So Mr. Trend and Mr. Evans, well done.
That's Mr. Trend, by the way.
So there's, it's so that I don't forget to send the MHSAA form.
Listen, I, I am very impressed when I, when I saw this was on the agenda. So, well done. And do you, do we, I know before, we played other McComb County schools down there. Do you, is that still the plan that that's what you, I know you say you're.
We play schools from around the state of Michigan. So we played Saginaw, Novell one year, we played Chickama Valley, Stevenson, Leanne Lee. All the league schools go down there. All the, all the teams that have great programs go down there and play. Many of them, take it one step further, they go to a facility. We just tone it back because it's what our parents like. Our parents want to do more, I do more. But they just want to have a vacation and just come to the baseball. And as soon as they don't want to do it, I'm okay with not doing it because Mr. Trend, Mr. Trend fixed the spring break problem. So we no longer play the day, uh, league game Tuesday after we get back. So it's no longer an issue for us to be playing.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next item on our agenda, Mr. Trend's going to talk with us about athletic uniforms.
Yes.
You got the clicker there?
I do.
All yours.
Okay. Ray, are you able to see that?
Yes, sir.
All right, cool. So I, I just wanted, Mr. Wongzak asked me to do an update kind of where we're at in terms of the, the uniform buying process. I think it's been two years since we talked or, I don't know, we talked last year. But just kind of recapping, when this was brought forward, the goal was to have no programs fundraising for basic uniforms or basic supplies. So we looked at, we still continue to look at our current supply of uniforms. Looking at the ages of the uniforms and the sizes of our rosters. So when you, when you look at what's been bought and what's been planned to buy, know that this is a constant conversation with the coaches, looking at what we have, what we need, making sure when our kids go out there, they got what they need. So there may have been programs that were slated for uniforms that got bumped back a year from the original plan. And others got moved in because, you know, for example, boys soccer, they got bumped up because we had 30, 25 kids come out and we had 13 sets of uniforms. We're like, we've got to get this now. Where other teams, they've been, they've been good with what they've had previously. But we do plan on either adding to what they have or replacing what they have. Another thing that we've looked at doing, especially at the lower levels or with certain sports, is finding uniforms that we can add to as years go on. And this comes from my time coaching track. We bought uniforms one year. And then a couple of years later, we needed to add more to it. But the specific garment we had in terms of where the lines were on the shoulder was discontinued. So we had to buy a different kind of uniform that looked different. And if anybody, if anybody's a track person, there's not a lot of rules in track, but the rules that they have, they're really passionate about. And one of them is uniforms. Like they have to look the same if they're on a relay team. It's, it's wild. If anybody wants to sit through the track rules meeting, I can send you a link because it's wild.
No, thank you.
So we looked at finding uniforms that won't be discontinued. And we can add to if rosters grow or we can replace items that are falling apart or outdated. Unless we have to just replace the entire. So it allows us some flex, and we also looked at uniforms that allow us some flexibility with the rosters. So some seventh and eighth grade teams, when we buy those, we buy uniforms that both sets match in case we need to move a big uniform up here or put smaller ones down with the seventh grade. It gives us some flexibility with that instead of saying, well, we can't use these uniforms because we don't have enough smalls for the seventh graders this year. So. All right. So in 2023, and I'm not going to go through all of the numbers on here because I know you guys all have these in your board packets if you want to dig through. This was what I presented in 2023. What, where we, what our plan was. And part of this I needed to look at as well, there's going to be some discrepancies with these years. Because in this, when it says they were replaced, it means that some of them, it's the fall of that year, others, it's the spring of that year. So going forward, I'm going to track these based on the school year they were purchased during. So some of the numbers may change going forward. So I'm going to kind of just flip it and you're going to see the colors change. So yellow is what we were slated to buy this year. The reddish color is what's down the road. And green is what we've already purchased. So when I click. And it says 2003. Brian, can you click for me? There we go. So we've got more green now. And what it'd be, basically what I wanted to show is that we are ahead of the schedule I thought of back in 2023. Part of that is working with coaches and working with some different vendors on uniforms that we can buy. And again, some uniforms, we were able to, like the seventh grade basketball, we replaced some shorts for them. We were able to find a vendor for that. But I did reach out and find uniforms now that'll match the eighth grade so we can just replace that one. That one will get taken care of this year as well. Some of them, like boys golf, girls golf, tennis. Some of the, or specifically golf, we get a poll that the kids will keep. So again, the rule, the rule I gave the coaches is if the kids are going to keep it, they'll purchase it. If we collect it, then we'll purchase it. So that goes for golf and bowling. We're buying just blank shirts that the kids will wear. So if a kid can't afford a shirt, we make sure they have one. We just collected it. So these seventh grader actually didn't get full replacements. I was finally able to get in touch with the vendor that did the eighth grade ones. And the track ones, the middle school track, those will also be replaced this year. Actually, not replaced, we're actually buying the middle school track uniforms, which we haven't had for years. In the past, the kids always just bought a shirt for five-ish bucks. And they, a shirt and their own shorts. Now they're, they're getting their own uniforms. So. That also comes with eliminating some headaches for coaches and collecting money and getting shirts out to kids and all of that. We'll just have uniforms we'll collect at the beginning and at the end. So what you'll see, actually this JV number is going to change as well. Because when we order the uniforms here, they sent us a set that, I believe the numbers were in the wrong spot because the volleyball rules changed. Where you have to have the numbers. It's a lot of fun. So they actually sent us a set for the JV. So that will actually turn to green. Their uniforms will replace. So we are, we are ahead of schedule of where I thought in a five year cycle. So. I click? Yep. So you'll see this compares then the 2023 plan with the 2024. So there are some that weren't slated for a while that did get replaced. Cheer down here, boys soccer, or excuse me, sideline cheer. Middle school football. Okay, another one, in terms of dollars, what we looked at with the middle school, is we found a vendor and an item we liked, that's a reversible jersey. So instead of a middle schooler remembering their blue jersey on game day, now they can't forget it because the blue and the white are together.
They still won't.
They'll fight it. But Coach Misko and I talked and actually at the AD convention, I found one that we, I was able to actually get my hands on it. We liked it. So I wanted to make sure it wasn't too heavy, too heavy or something. But that one again is.
Part of the idea, by the way.
What's that?
Part of the idea to do that, by the way.
And again, this jersey is one that's fully supplemented. So if we need to add to it and if that company goes out of business, I can take that design to another company and say, make me these jerseys. So we can add back to it. So. Here's our cost breakdown by year. And what I did was I just pulled up my budget spreadsheet and what we purchased. You'll notice over here is when our football jerseys were, our varsity football uniforms were purchased. Those came in in chunks for us because it was a large order. That was the year that when we did the plan, we're like, football's going to be a big order. We actually finished that year doing varsity football and getting a number of other sports and still only finished $900 over that uniform budget. And what I did was that year I just spent $900 less from the supply budget you guys provided me. So I was able to kind of boot some things around. And then so far, this is what we've purchased for this year. And you'll see some of them are, are in the works as well. Track, basketball, some golf, some more golf uniforms. So that's where we're, that's projected where we're at for this year. But you'll see that if that number holds and we're lower, and I can tell you this middle school track number is actually lower than this. And I believe football, or excuse me, basketball is lower than that. What we'll do is we'll start working ahead at what I had planned for next year. Which is on the next slide. So looking ahead, the remainder of this year, those scheduled purchases that I laid out in there. And then whatever money's left over, start to work on 26, 27, which would be middle school volleyball, our freshman volleyball, cross country is due for uniforms. I would throw track in there as well, adding to the supplemented uniforms they purchased back when I was coaching. Next year, complete all of those purchases and begin looking at the uniforms we purchased in previous years in terms of numbers and if any, any pieces need to be replaced. And working on replacing those and making sure that as our rosters grow, we have enough garments to cover all of those kids. So we don't have the tiny seventh grader, eighth grader for football going out there in large pants. 27, 28 is projected to be the final year of that, that five year cycle. So again, making sure by that date, any team that has not received new uniforms or are up to date, that we get those taken care of, replacements, and then begin working on our want-ins, which would be jackets for teams, like a lot of the teams that are outside, like soccer, tennis. When I was at regionals, I was kind of taking, I spent a lot of time at other events looking at facilities and other teams' uniforms and the stuff they have. And I just come back with a list of things. But looking at weather jackets, football, looking at, you know, as we, as we get into colder games, hopefully playing late into October, November, some, some capes for them to wear on the sidelines. Looking at protecting our investment, bags for the kids to put their stuff in so that it's not jumbled or lost or all of that. Practice jerseys for those programs that need it. And again, it, it kind of takes our programs and now really shows our kids, hey, we're investing in this. We're investing in practice. And, you know, having everybody look uniform for that. And then warmups as well. Start to look at school provided warmups. So again, going from basic needs to a little more, not as basic of a need, but still something that these teams can use and add to what they're doing. So. I believe that's the last slide I have. And again, just talking protecting our investment. Coaches have been great about inventory sheets, letting me know what kids haven't turned things in. And we've been able to track down missing stuff. We haven't had a lot of things walk off. These are old pictures, but for the board members that weren't around. The supply budget, we've taken, taken time to organize these uniform rooms, getting shelves, getting totes, so that everything's not a general mess and it really satisfies my type A brain to see everything organized and neat. Just talking supplies, and again, this is, this is from before, but it's a lot of the things we've looked at. The big one when we did this was, was balls for the different sports. Protecting our investment in terms of ball bags, shoulder pads, first aid kits. The coaches have really appreciated having first aid kits that we can restock throughout the year with. Really ice packs, pre-wrapped tape. I mean, we've gone, we've, we've really stretched that money. We started putting it back into the facilities. You know, the, we spend a little bit in gas for the gator, but a lot of that is raking the field and getting the stuff out of the field and taking time to put the pellets back in so that that turf lasts longer than we, we plan on it lasting. We continue to add hurdles each year. Actually, my plan was to add 10 every year, but the company we buy it from runs a sale in this fall. The past two years, I've gotten them for buy two, get one free. So we've added 15 hurdles the past two years. So. We've, we've put money back into the baseball fields, buying diamond dust and dirt for both fields to help fill them back up. So we've, we've really taken that money and put it, get all back into them. So. Questions for me?
I don't have any questions. I just want, I just, I remember when this started and I just appreciate all your hard work on this. I love to see all the green. That's really cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
I was going to say the same thing. I, I like what you're doing here. What we can see is going on and it has worked. Our fields look good.
And to be honest, I, I probably could have added another column of stuff to this this year.
Very organized. Very nice.
Thank you. Love to see Margaret all the time.
Me too. I, um, this, this whole uniform stuff, this was a big thing. So if I'm looking at this because of what we've been doing, so year five, you're really looking at once. Is what we're going to be.
And, and not.
So then when you, when you start back the circle, you'll, you'll go back to that first group and just keep going.
Yep. And, and again, it may not, you know, each cycle may not be these sports, these sports, these sports. Because we may have ones that last a little bit longer than others. Making sure in that five years, everybody gets what they want. Yep. You know, just, and Kelsey will talk about it in her, in her update, but like, from an athlete's standpoint, having quality uniforms. And I, and I mean, what we have isn't like over the top, oh my gosh, this and that. But like, the, the boys soccer team this year, I don't know, a couple of times they come up like, thank you. These uniforms are awesome. They're awesome. They're awesome. Like the kids appreciate it. And, you know, it, like, it shows that not just the athletic department, but you guys care about what goes on, on the field and you're investing in them. So they've, they've taken a lot of pride in that. So I appreciate it.
So for the most part, your parents are believing.
So for the most part, your parents are fully responsible for the shoes?
Yeah, like, and, and again, the rule is anything that they take with them. So like, we're not gonna provide the kids socks because I don't wanna collect. You know, talking to, talking to Coach West about volleyball. You know, the girls provide their own shorts for volleyball. If there's a need, we, we address those kids that there's a need, they need, we, we help them out with that. But, you know, what we can collect and give back to a kid, give to another kid the next year. Everything else, yes, the parents have been covering.
But I think that's a good point. Maybe the conversation came a lot from all the fundraising-
That was going.
And all parents were giving, and it came from, what are we paying for? What is it, what does the, what does the school pay for the basic needs of an athlete? Just so, because I don't think you were back on board when we started doing this. So that is, that is a good point, what the parents are doing. That's where it came from, that we were doing all this fundraising and just all this money going for this uniform, that kind of thing. So that's, that's where all this came from, starting a process of what, what are we providing as a school district for an athlete to participate in the school?
Yep, and, and what I've seen too is the coaches have taken, taking that burden of purchasing uniforms off of the coaches. They've been able to take the money that their programs do fundraise for. Because it's small-town athletics, fundraising is part of it. I know every year, I'm gonna get this column or this or that. But they've taken what they would've spent in uniforms and putting it into the kids other ways. So they're, you know, purchasing their shirts, they wear underneath their pads or buying this, buying that. So some of those-
Non-essential.
Non-essential, yes.
So rest of the, the jerseys that has their name on the back?
So, so like, so like football, the jersey, the, the name on the back, that's actually a plate that gets sewn on. So every, every year at the end of the year, Coach Misco pops all of those stitches.
He does that on his own.
He does. I'm sure now he can get Max and Kean in there. But yes, those do get, the nameplate gets taken off and then it gets put back into circulation.
And then they're sewn back on.
The next year, they get new plates, they get something back down, yeah.
So, but if you are, but like, because I know like some people have options to purchase their, like the golf team or whatever, right?
Yeah, yeah, so-
Like, if yours, like, do all seniors have the opportunity to purchase their, like, football jersey, let's say?
Not really, it hasn't really come up. And that's why I put that replacement value in there too, is like-
They take it.
If we had something where we'd want to. Now, what I did do was we replaced some old program-bought uniforms and if the kids wanted to buy new, I had jerseys for next year and the ones were purchased by the program previously. And some kids, some seniors that deserved it walked off of those jerseys. That was okay by me. But in terms of what the district has bought, yeah, we collected all. We haven't really had anybody ask to buy their, their uniform. It would be tough, especially if they're not close to the end of that cycle, because I wanna make sure with some of those that we aren't supplemented or easy to replace, that we can get a replacement garment, which we have been able to do. We have been able to buy one or two of these jerseys or these pants to, to replace what's missing, so.
Anyone have any other questions?
I'll just leave you with this. We were watching the budget, just since we are supplied, the price is going up. We talked about this two years, three years ago when we started this. That initial dollar may need to be increased based on market.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey, do you have something?
Next item on our agenda is an overnight trip request to Land City.
Greetings, everyone. For those who didn't know me, I'm Corinne Christensen. I'm the DECA advisor here at the high school. I was given an opportunity to take 10 students to Michigan State November 13th and 14th. It isn't overnight, they're supposed to be staying in the Marriott right on campus. But it's not a conference, it's called a summit. So hopefully all of you got the agenda. So the students won't be competing, it's more informational, and they're gonna have the opportunity to listen to guest speakers, do round tables, go to breakout sessions, do a campus tour too as well. Definitely to showcase and highlight Michigan State. I didn't get the literature until about less than two weeks ago. I presented it to Ms. Abel over here and just thought it was a great opportunity for our students. So hopefully, well, next slide please, if it will. All right, oh, sorry. Here's a little bit about it. If you're familiar with DECA, it is an organization outside of school. Students meet with me traditionally on Wednesdays. We meet in my classroom for about an hour. The only thing DECA has is districts. So there's no preliminaries up to it, but things like this. Our districts this year is going to be January 10th. We are no longer traveling to Lake Orion, it's gonna be at Anchor Bay this year. So we're a lot closer. And our district got realigned. We were competing with a lot of the Troy schools, and they're such a mega, mega school. You can ask Liz Schaefer over here, because she's one of my DECA members. They were competing in a lot of different categories. So when we got realigned our chapter, we're kind of excited about that. And Mrs. Fields attends a lot of, for all of our DECA events. She's one of our judges, not our personal judges, but for the district. So we're happy about the realignment and it being at Anchor Bay this year. And that is January 10th. Once they do, or if they do, they get past, come up beyond districts, they end up going to states, and states is the first weekend of March. So we're probably gonna see them again, or overnight if we have students who may get to states on that. They do a lot of activities though at this event. I personally never been to it, but I've talked to some other chapter leaders who have been to it. They said you have to take each student's, it's a great opportunity and it gives them out of their comfort zone, especially when they start talking to other schools who have veteran individuals. So here's a little bit of the agenda. We have to be on campus roughly at noon time. They want us at the hotel if we wanna do the campus tour. We do a campus tour first and then we get into an orientation, a registration, a little bit of leisure time at the hotel. And then that night, Thursday night is the 13th. We will have a guest speaker, they'll have a dinner. All the meals are included while we're there, so that's a big thing. At my meeting today, I did have a DECA meeting today. We talked about the students and a little bit about the agenda. But since we didn't have approval yet, I told them we're gonna talk more next week about it. They're really strict about curfew, so there is security and they do use campus police at the hotel that weekend, or that night, I guess you could say. And then all day Friday, they are running. They start at eight o'clock in the morning and they go to two, but it's like a non-stop breakout session, guest speakers, discussing DECA topics and such. Is there any questions about DECA? You can ask Mrs. Fields, right?
How many, how many kids?
This year we have 19 in our chapter. Only 10 are allowed to go because some chapters are like 100 kids. So they limit it to only 10.
Okay. So we're just gonna do a lottery?
I was gonna say, I guess.
It's gonna be a lottery?
Okay.
So costs are paid, we're gonna speak a little bit.
Yeah, so in terms of the cost, we are able to use 61A CTE funds for students that are in the class because it is a leadership component. We do have some students in DECA, like Liz, for example, who's no longer in Miss C's class, but she's still part of the organization. So we're gonna use revenue generated from the Devil's Den, which is of course tied to DECA, tied to marketing, tied to all of those things, to supply or pay for the cost of any students that were unable to use the 61A funds for. So I definitely like to make sure that we follow those by the book and, you know, just because someone's not in the class, I wouldn't wanna, you know, use those funds for, for that. So we have alternative ways. So it will be no cost to any of the students attending. Whether they're currently in the class or not, they're also a part of DECA, so we'll be covering that.
Well, to be a DECA member, you have to be in the class or take in the class. Questions?
So tonight is, because of the time frame, you'll be asked to move it so that they can move forward with the registration and all that.
So first on the side to-
Me?
Yeah, it's one chapter per, per 10 students.
Right up. I think Cynthia likes to come down too.
I bet she does. I'm a huge fan, just so you guys know, a huge thank you to Cynthia because each person, each chapter is required to provide judges at all of these events. And so like, this is like a big time commitment. Like, some of these are two, three days long. You're down in Detroit, you're at Huntington Place, and she so thankfully has driven out to Lake Orion and has really supported the group. So when we say she's like a part of DECA, she truly is that piece that Post-Curie can't serve in that role as the advisor and a judge. And so they're always begging. So if anyone else wants to be a judge too, you can always reach out to us because we would love to have more people come, so.
And someone else is Becky, where'd she go?
Oh, she's, she's our proctor. I'm not allowed to be the proctor because they do take an exam too. And this is where we're at, is our proctor, so she does the proctor. There's some things that advisors are not allowed to do, just because I would-
We can read the answers to say.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next up, me again.
Yes.
So we're gonna bring Ms. Shagna up too, because this one's a little longer. Sorry, but the visuals are what make this, I guess you could say. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Europe trip. Last year in March 2025, Ms. Abel and I ran a Europe trip. It was a complete success, I think. Mr. Wamsley had the opportunity to join us too on that trip, along with the three of us and was it 14, 15 other people, 15 other people. This time, we're gonna try to do a new trip, but it's gonna be the odd year, so in 2027. So we are forward-thinking, but we wanna start marketing it to the students now, just so they can make a payment plan and get an idea. This time, we discussed and we came down with, we're in New Germany, Italy, and Switzerland. It's gonna be a 10-day trip over spring break 2027. Since we only have about nine days there, the students will have to do school business for like roughly a day or two prior we're gonna do. Last time, we did it post, so they missed the Monday, Tuesday, we came back for spring break. We feel that a lot of teachers are really getting back in, they're getting into the swing of things before seniors leave and all of that. So this time, we're gonna do it the day or two before spring break. Seems like that's a low, I mean, with a lot of things that are happening around school. But the itinerary's gonna look something like this. The flights are gonna be in and out of Frankfurt. And here's a little bit of the itinerary. Ms. Shagna's had the opportunity and so has Ms. Abel to hit some of these spots. I personally have not, so I'm quite excited about this one. What we're going to try to do is revert it all to, depending on our population. This is open to any student. We'll try to do high school student, I'm not gonna take a five or six-year-old with me. So it's the high school students, their families, parents, and alumni. They still get, students still get a student rate if they're 20 or under. So students who went with me last time, they're like, "I'm gonna be graduated by 2027, can't I go?" We're like, "Yes, you can go." But what usually happens is college spring breaks don't line up with high school spring breaks. So they're like, they don't really want to go to college, I'm a current seniors that are here in the building. But they're like, "Oh, if it lines up, I really, really wanna go." So we might see a few more repeat individuals. Here's the timeline in regards to the dates. I know most of you got this because I sent this over. But this is the timelines for our dates for 2027. The company EF Tours makes us be able to flex both a day or two because they pair us up traditionally with another school. Last year, we were paired up with a school from Miami, it worked out great. I mean, the kids are still in contact with a lot of the kids from Miami and they were a really small group, there was only even a total. So they were, they were great. Here's a day-by-day. I mean, I'll be more than happy to go through it, but we're flying in and out of Frankfurt, Germany. We're going into Rothenburg for a day. Then we're gonna go visit some castles and do some castle tours. We're gonna get to Oshberg. We also are going to do the Olympic Stadium when we get into Munich. So that's, I have been to Munich. And then we're gonna go, I have been to the concentration camp too. Get into the concentration camp at Doc O. And then we're going to Enzbro as we travel throughout to Venice. Traveling to Venice, we'll be on motor coach this time, I did find out. Most of our transportation last time was through rail. We, I mean, we traveled throughout the boat, or the bus in the small, in the city, but not for long journeys. So this time, we will be traveling to Venice by bus instead of rail. We'll travel throughout Venice. One of the highlights that they had in Venice was glass glowing and then a gondola ride. For those of you who ever watched movies and seen that in Venice, you've probably seen the ultimate gondola rides throughout the canals. That would be included in our student tour price. Then we'll get into Lysern and then do a few more castles, like the Heidelberg Castle and such. This time, last time we did 11-day itinerary, this is a 10-day itinerary. Just kind of worked with our schedule and such. The last day, we lost, not we lose kids, by no means. But we lost their mojo, we lost their motivation. You know, I remember students, they never said, "I miss mom or dad," they're like, "I miss my dog." "I miss my pad, I miss my bed." We got there a few times, but ultimately it's one day less. Everything is pretty much included. I do have what's not included. But travel insurance is the big thing for parents. It's the first thing they ask, you know, "Is travel insurance included?" Yes, that's included in our price. Can they opt out of it? Yes, but I really don't let them opt out of it. I give them that one sticker price and this is the way it goes and this is the way it holds. Two meals a day are included. Meals were fine. I mean, I have three people here who can concur about the meals. If they want more, they definitely can get more. You really, I'm not saying you don't have to eat three meals a day, but there was plenty of opportunities to get snacks or another meal if you really wanted in your downtime. Traditionally, any tickets on tours are included and there's 24-hour assistance, which if something does happen, we did have a student, we didn't even know about it. We were sleeping on our tour, whatnot, a Richmond student, the Miami student who ran into a door and had to go get his dishes. But he went to the hospital, there was such a long wait. Come to find out, there was a doctor or nurse on our bus anyways that was from Miami. She, I think blew them, didn't she blew them or something?
She fixed it.
Yeah, she fixed it. I mean, he sent it to the hospital for like six, seven hours and then said, "Forget it," and left the hospital and one of them was the one to care about. So it's great opportunities for the students too as well. What students are responsible for, and this is why we like to get it out early, the students have to have a passport. So that is first and foremost. This gives them plenty of time to get that passport. And if they apply for a passport when they're over 15, it's good for 10 years. So if they apply at 14 and nine months, it's only good for five years. So the passport, we will not need visas for traveling to these countries. Baggage fees if there are any, but there weren't any this time when we traveled last. Tips to the driver. That is something that we, us three, have to pre-collect. And then in turn, take it to a financial institution and get it converted into a local currency. The tip we think is kind of bizarre over there, you'd think it would just be included. But I had to have envelopes for each individual person we ever encountered. So I had to pre-collect all of the tips. So we had an envelope for the bus driver, we had an envelope for the tour guide on day one, the tour guide on day two, the tour guide on day three. And then we had an envelope for our whole tour guide, the tour guide who stayed with us for the whole 10 days and such. So this is something that we'll do behind the scenes with us. If they want any additional snacks, that's not included. And there are opportunities to upgrade the rooms. Ms. Abel does a single supplement, she doesn't want a room with me.
I'll happily go on record saying.
That's what maybe I have, Ms. Shagna, this year, or in 2027. So they're single supplements.
And she's still deciding whether she should.
No, she is, she is. Here's the kind of payment plan that we're gonna approach and present to families that might have to get tweaked, you know, this is like as of when we made this today. So it doesn't get approved for two weeks, we're gonna have to change that monthly payment and monthly plan. The price is $4,579. The last trip was $4,499, so it's $80 more, hence two years later. Not much of a difference. The adult cost is $53.99 and ultimately you can make payments along the way. It's $95 to get started, that enrollment fee. And then you can decide on your payment plan with EF Tours. You do not have to do this monthly plan. This just gives someone a visual in regards to marketing to determine if they can or cannot afford it. Unlike any other trips, EF Tours is definitely unique. I can attest by saying how it's unique because we never would've gotten to some of those places that we ultimately did. The firsthand knowledge of the tour guides is absolutely fabulous. Their whole idea behind it is to educate the youth and just to build networking and ideas of other cultures, other cuisines and such. And they definitely do a good job in all of that. I already mentioned a little bit about that safety. If you ever look up EF Tours, they do have destinations all around the globe. Europe is one of their definite hotspots. You can kind of see in the map up there how impressive some of the facilities would be. How Europe is where a lot of their trips are concentrated. And then also over in Asia, a lot of them are concentrated there. But every teacher and chef room has to do like a little background check. I don't know if you remember during that, but we had to send in paperwork for background checks. So that definitely gives, as it says, peace of mind to everyone involved in the tour operations. Here's the cancellation insurance, as I told you, we automatically include it. If anyone's luggage got stolen or lost, there's an insurance for them. They could as well lose anyone's. We do not make, or some tour groups make all of their students do, carry on a link. We can't do that because she won't. So, so we all take our luggage, but you have to carry your luggage. So when we are on those trains, you have to carry your luggage. We have to do all of that. If something is interrupted along the way, like we miss a day or two there, the insurance covers that during the program interruption insurance. If something is interrupted along the way, like we miss a day or two there, the insurance covers that during the program interruption insurance. So it is a win-win for the cost of that insurance, flights delayed and such. There's always an eight-hundred number. They also have an email and chat if parents want to get ahold of the professionals. They are available twenty-four hours. What else? And here's how to enroll. Here's the QR code to enroll. So if you do click that QR code, we're not publicizing it yet. You could start enrolling. Oh, there. Heidi?
The one thing I will say, obviously, I said this last time when we were planning. I went on the Spain trip with Ms. Smallwood, my first year here, obviously, one of the most recent trip. And I think I've been on seven EF Tours. I've actually been on this tour, the Germany-Switzerland-Italy one. It's hands-down my favorite one I've been on just because of the vast array of things that you see over in Europe. So when we kind of, well, actually, I approached with C this time, and I said, "Okay, you're planning another trip for next year. Let's get some, let's get some, you know, prices and some itineraries." So as soon as I saw this one, I was like, "Hands down, this is the one we need to do." And then, you know, fit the price point and things like that. So it definitely is a good trip. And then also, based on the number of student enrolled, based on the number of paying enrollees, this is in your overnight packet. Every six paying members requires a chaperone. And so basically, like, this is the C's trip. And then as more individuals were enrolled, there's additional chaperones from the school that are required to go. So that's where myself, Miss Shagna, and any others would come in, and so we'll just kind of like make a list. Obviously, any staff member is welcome to pay for their own. But specifically, to be an actual identified chaperone on the trip, it's one for every six paying students or adults. So even if there's, you know, four adults and two kids, they require one staff member from the actual school to be an identified chaperone. So that's where kind of, I don't wanna say hierarchy, but like where this list of like the C, Miss Shagna, and myself come in is that we would be the ones that are those official chaperones as more and more individuals enroll.
So you're, so you're saying that those parents are part of the Richmond schools tour.
They have to.
Not just their kids.
Correct.
That they go.
Yes. So like if there was three, if there was three parents, or like actually, we had an aunt and two of her friends go with one of their, you know, one of the Richmond students, and then we had two other kids. Even though three of those people were adults, it requires one staff member. So they say paying participant, whether it's an adult or a child, it's a one-to-six ratio.
There's a lot of walking. Gotta wear good shoes. First day, you're utterly exhausted. Second day, a little bit exhausted, but then you get it. By day two or three, you're good.
We've had students by their age for this. I know you did the sheets. So we've had kids who would use cost.
We've had one student that paid for two full trips, both Spain and the one we just went on, collecting bottles. That's the only pop cans you should pay for two full trips. So it is possible depending on how bad you wanna go.
And how hard you work for.
Exactly. Thank you.
And I'm assuming it's coach for the...
Yes.
And then how many different hotels are you actually?
Well, it says, uh, this one's a little different.
It depend, yeah, it will depend like...
Oh, sorry.
So this one is probably one, two, three, four, five. So this one, you're, this one, you're moving a lot. Like you're one-day hotel, unpack, sleep, wake up, you put your stuff, and you're out the door. So this, yeah, so like if it says one night, it's, you get in probably at nine PM, and then you're out the door at seven AM the next day. So it's literally like just a room to some kind of sleep, bed, and shower, and you're on your way.
They are very nice hotels right now. They were.
I am one too. When I was in high school, many, many years ago, in Everchman, I got a chance to go on EF Tour as well to Germany and Austria and to London. And it was an amazing experience. I'm excited about being able to go again. It was a beautiful, beautiful scenery, amazing time, so I'm really excited about the possibility.
I think that's cool. Now you get to go as a parent. Yeah, that's cool.
Did the link work, Heidi?
What's that?
Did the link work?
Oh, yeah.
Don't be doing nothing in there yet.
Well, we're ready over here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our 2024-25 student data presentation. Who wants to stand up and come up?
Now?
All in the family. This one is definitely a fruit of effort as two girls test scores. It's tested, right? It's all of us, so we each have a little piece of our report this evening. So just as a reminder, there's kind of a lot of words, but just as a reminder. So my piece of our presentation tonight will focus on our state assessment data, which is the MSEP, the PSAT, and the SAT. And students are taking that from grade third grade to eleventh grade, kind of, kind of in and out throughout those grades depending on what grade it is. It depends on which content areas they're testing in, so that's a quick little overview of that. But just kind of a quick reminder that if we do look at this data, it is just that snapshot of a moment in time, right? We're looking at a lot of data throughout the course of the year. This is the big data, the data that the state was gonna look at, and the data that kind of brings us in different ways. But again, certainly not the only data that we look at. So then when I turn it over to the building administrators, they will also be sharing our, a little bit more, a little more, our benchmark data, which we use the NWA here. So in Michigan, you have to identify which benchmark you use, and every area is one of the most common. And so again, we've been using that for several years. So the state requires a benchmark assessment, and so they will share our NWA data as well. So the pieces I'll share again is that one time and one time only in the spring, in April, kind of into May sometimes, that we're taking these assessments. And then again, the building administrators will share NWA, which is taken three times a year. So that one, again, as I always say, that's more local. We kind of see it. We can see if we're moving in the right direction, you know, as we go throughout the year. Actually, just as a team, this afternoon earlier, we were talking about there are proficiency charts and metrics out there that kind of do tie into NWA to the MSEP and/or SAT, PSAT. So when we do test the students in the fall, we just wrapped up at the end of September, our NWA testing, we can look at those scores, and they are very typically a good indicator of the proficiency rate that we would expect to see in the spring. So everything ties together in some way, shape, or form. So this first set of graphs is going to compare our Richmond scores on average. They also have different grade levels. So the average proficiency rate in advanced and proficient, which again, is what the state considers to be proficiently acceptable, if you will, where we want kids to be. And so again, this is just the average by grade. So ours is the orange, that first row, and then statewide average is in blue, and the countywide, from McComb County, is in green. And so in this particular one, it goes from third grade, fourth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and eleventh. Those are the grades where the state is pulling and looking at ELA data. The students do test in ninth and tenth grade as well. With the SAT, the state just doesn't have to pull that. So that's why it's not on this graph. But as you can kind of take a look at that, we are beating the state and county in five of our seven grade levels. And I've gotten at grade levels that we aren't quite ahead on, or still close, very similar, kind of that trend. So we don't think that John Sow is, you know, I don't think that's of a major concern. Something else, and I'll kind of talk about it as we go on, but, you know, obviously, we all want to and hope to see that your scores kind of continue to go up. Again, this particular chart is for ELA proficiency. But you can see as we look at whether it's Richmond, whether it's the state, whether it's the county, there's always kind of that ebb and flow. There's little things, little ups and downs, things that happen throughout the course of, you know, a student's career in school for grade reasons. Sometimes the tests change. Sometimes the way they're scoring it changes. Always, we tend to find that, you know, knowing that these assessments are based on the state standards, there's hundreds of state standards, right? Many, many, many. And you can't give as much time to every single one throughout the course of a school year. And so we're always kind of trying to stay on top of that. Okay, which, which of those standards are the ones that are most assessed? Sometimes if they change that, well, we just spent two months working on a certain standard, then they took it off the test. So there's always that kind of level of keeping up with the test, and I feel like that's, you know, kind of answers some of that question. Why might you see some up and down over time? It's to be exact. So this, this particular one is MAP. So again, we kind of see our comparison against the state and the county as you go through the different grade levels, three through eleven. In this one, we were leading or seeing the state and county in four of the seven areas. But even in our areas, like so eleventh grade, for instance, is one of our, one area, one grade level, we were lower than the state and county. But later, when we look at the growth of that eleventh grade cohort, that was good growth for them, right? So they, they were historically as a group kind of lower than the state and the county. But we're seeing that particular group continue to grow, so that's a good thing, even though this chart might not look as good.
The MAP.
This is MAP? Yep.
And now, is this after we put in the new curriculum?
This is, yeah. So this would be two years in, or almost two full years in on the new MAP curriculum, yeah. So new MAP, and then last year was the first year with the new EF LA curriculum. And we have talked about that. There's always, there tends to be, and we've actually, at the county level, we were talking about this. Sometimes a little dip when you have a new curriculum because everyone's still getting used to it, they're getting trained in it, they're kind of figuring out how it works. It might be a very different kind of teaching style than students are used to. So that isn't uncommon. You know, we certainly don't wanna make excuses for anything like that, but that's something we're paying close attention to. Kind of seeing how the MAP piece was implemented, we were able to come in and with the ELA implementation last year, we were able to do some different things with the training upfront, which I think was probably beneficial. So we're hoping, you know, that that will continue to increase, and we won't see those decreases. And we do want to be quick, then we're back to it. And science is not tested as frequently as ELA MAP and, as ELA MAP are. So they are only tested in science for fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade. But again, we do see that our students perform pretty well, either above or very, very close to the state and county averages. And social studies also tested in fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade. So again, two out of the three. Something that kind of for me catches my attention on this is typically in elementary grade levels. And so for us, even for the fifth, you know, granted, they're in our middle school, but considered more of that elementary grade level, you have social studies and/or science kind of mixed in with, with all your other core subjects. So they're often, and naturally, and for many good reasons, is a bigger focus on ELA and MAP up through fifth grade. But then I like it that to see in eighth grade and eleventh grade, when it truly is its own subject area, those teachers are becoming the experts in social studies and really digging into those standards. We really see it go up, and for our students, you know, I have quite a bit more than the state and county average. So I think that's an important piece to look at when we compare across the grade levels going up into middle and high school. Definitely a point to be proud of. It's a personal studies.
Is Ray no longer with us? Oh, he's on the screen. It's muted. I wonder if he has stepped away. Just, just ask him if he's still with us.
Ray, do you hear us?
There he is. Just making sure.
Should we hit those in connection?
No, I have to step away for a moment.
No problem. I think we've clicked onto the presentation for you, Brian. So as far as district-wide points of pride related to those county, our county kind of and state comparisons, as you saw, we continue to score above or at the county average level, almost every grade level and content area. Thought it was a good mix-up between the different grade levels, so very, very happy to see that. Sixth grade was a highlight area for the middle school. Their ELA proficiency rose over twenty points, and math increased by more than eighteen points. If you looked at from 2023 up to 2025, those are huge gains that you don't typically see over a short span like that. And then similarly, eleventh grade, students outperform their peers in science and social studies. And specifically, in social studies, grew by twenty-two points over those three years. So again, those are really, really huge gains, and something to be proud of in the district. So these next set of graphs are gonna show us a trend of the same cohort of students or trends. So this particular graph will only see just the third grade trend because they only start taking their assessments in third grade for the same level assessments. So this particular one is just the third grade group from 2023, and the third graders in 24, and the third graders in 25. So we do see a little bit of a decrease, but again, if you look at the orange line for math over the trend of three years, it is still trending up, even though it bumped back down a little bit. Again, ELA could be related to that in curriculum. We dig up, again, we've had those conversations. And I'm sure I will continue to share some of our next steps that we've talked about. So we're looking closely at why things might be moving up or down, and quickly coming up with ways to address those differences. So now for fourth grade, we're able to see, again, we can start to see that cohort trend. So the graph on the left of the screen is similar to the one that you just saw for the third grade. So again, it's that, that fourth graders of 2023, and the fourth grader of 2024, and the fourth graders of 2025. Again, this one, we do see a pretty nice increase in math and a little bit of a dip in ELA. And again, we're getting to start looking at the cohort. So this would be last year's fourth graders, and then what they were doing as third graders. So that's the difference in the graph on the right. It's the same group of students. And so that group of students did decline a little bit. There are some, again, we look closely at that. We do know they transitioned from one building to another, so it is a transitional year for them, which is often a time when students' scores decrease a little bit historically. And then wherever you look, whatever communities or state you want to look at, you see that quite often. And so again, we are trying to pay close attention to what we can do to mitigate that as much as possible. And fifth grade, again, as a reminder, is the year where they do all four content area tests. So that's why you see more lines on this one than the other ones. So again, you can kind of see if we're not, nothing's going up or down drastically, right? It's relatively consistent. Math, again, does seem to be an area where we want to focus in on. So a little bit of a dip there, but again, if you look at that three-year, from thirty-one to twenty-five, is, you know, no, we want us to go the other way, but that is not a huge, huge drop. Fifth grade, a little bit more of a drop, and so again, we've had those conversations. Those happen, those change. What are we doing differently in those classes? And so that one, we do wanna look closely at, and again, that's that same group of students moving through time. If I always stop, maybe you have any questions on any of these, I will be happy to pause. Sixth grade, back to just ELA and MAP. So that one, a nice, we highlighted that on that slide, a couple slides ago, seeing that continue to grow in sixth grade. Again, you have teachers kind of becoming that content area expert, so that could be a benefit. Similar for that group of current, well, now they're seventh graders. Last year's sixth graders, when they were fifth grade, and when they were fourth grade, how they looked. Yeah, same deal for our seventh graders. This one, kind of, again, it's interesting, you never point out, it's gonna be right. This one, almost an exact match of ELA and MAP, both kind of had a little dip, but then came right back after, so that's a good thing. And this one, MAP was going up, but ELA wasn't, so we...
Do we know what, what was related to that dip in twenty-four? Was there any factors that?
I'm trying to think of that.
Kind of tied into that?
I think that we talked specifically on that agenda.
It's the group.
Yeah, that group has, yeah. So yeah, if we were to look at that group, so next year, thanks, John, I might even know it. That, so remember, the graph on the left is the third, the seventh graders of twenty-three, the seventh graders of twenty-four, the seventh graders of twenty-five. So if we were to look at that group of students that were in seventh grade last spring, we would see historically, their scores were always a bit lower than their peers on one side or the other of them. So the sixth graders or the eighth graders, it's just kind of where that group came in, and they've always been a bit lower than their two peers before and after them, if that makes sense. Yep. I would be more concerned if I saw it on the other graph, honestly. And again, something that we would address in that graph on the right. Okay, we see this same group of kids moving in a downward trend versus an upward trend. That for us is something that we can address more swiftly and kind of pinpoint and figure that out. Again, some, some groups just do score difference. So for us, I think we spend a little bit more time at the school district level, looking at those cohort trends. And eighth grade, again, is an all-four content area year. So pretty similar type of data as we've seen on the previous grade levels. But again, also that highlight of like off-the-chart growth in ELA. And this one... And this one, grade scores, and there's only, there's not the trend for that because those students didn't test in sixth or in seventh grade or sixth grade for their blue and their green scores all the way to the right. That was in their science and social studies, but scoring very well in science and social studies comparatively. Those are quite high proficiency rates. And again, for 11th grade, they're, according to the state data, that's why they don't have the testing in 10th and 9th grade. Again, they do take the PSAT. We look at that data, the state just doesn't look at it. So that's why there is not a cohort trend for this slide, but we're seeing some good forward trending for the most part data here. So I will turn it over just a moment to the buildings. Like I said, they will be talking about the NWEA benchmark and a couple of other highlights and areas that we are focused on and moving forward with. So any questions? Again, as we talk about, fill the state on stuff data.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
So I, I was trying to follow along with that one chart, just thought I might be able to find my own answer, but I, I missed it, I think. I'm looking for, so like last year's, so this, this year's seventh graders, I guess. So then my question is, is I'm wondering, because it did show that they were kind of low on everything comparatively to the county and the state in math, this year's seventh graders.
Would be last year's sixth graders.
So last year's sixth graders. So I'm trying to see if there was a climb in their number or not.
So if we look at our sixth grade cohort data, they actually have over the three years compared against themselves, right? They are moving up slowly but surely, but but that three-year trend does show increase for them. Yeah, certainly we hope it would continue to grow more, but yeah.
Well, sure. No, I just wanted to see, because those were, they were pretty low numbers comparatively to the state and county.
Yep.
And then also then this year's 10th graders.
I'm not so weak that we.
This year's 10th graders, so we wouldn't have.
We wouldn't have any.
I could pull it.
Could we see how this year's 10th graders did in eighth grade, though?
We could.
It's on my slides.
It is.
It's on this one.
Okay. I'll wait that. Well, not this one, but yeah, right.
So yeah, like I said, the building absolutely looks at those. I was kind of sticking with what the state was at for this, if you look at it, but yeah, that's what we did talk about that.
Well, I'll just add a piece that we can't forget, is we have another group of our building that is looking at attendance. And so when we have kids that are chronically absent for a variety of reasons, that, you're not in school, you're missing instruction. So we're trying to tackle that as well as when you think about it, this is 1,098 hours we have kids in one year. So when you take out the stuff that, the fun stuff that we don't want to lose, because it's part of the experience, the actual instructional time is less than 1,098 hours. So we're, we have very limited time with kids. And then when you add on that, attended, what was kindergarten last year, they were the worst cohort last year. And again, we don't want kids to come into school sick, obviously, you know, you don't want to spread them. But when you're dealing with that and you create a pattern, that kids just naturally continue that pattern, it's something that we struggle to overcome to address. Again, nobody here is making excuses. This team that we have, you guys have come here, standing here and all the Dean's supporting, they're looking at this every, every month, every two weeks in their instructional meetings. They're trying to figure out those solutions.
Definitely. Very much so.
I'd like to add to it, at least the PSAT, this is a single day of testing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we need to remember that. It's one day, one piece in time.
Or for SAT, absolutely. Because.
I didn't think it would happen.
And when we think though, but on top of that, if you think about like an eighth grader or a fifth grader, all fourth graders are not necessarily on the same, on the same day. That one is a little different on stuff, just the way the design, you have a window of time. So typically schools will say, okay, you know, we're going to do ELA this day and math this day, or these two tests this day. And I mean, but on top of, again, we talked about the NWA testing is also happening. So in these grade levels, testing fatigue is a real thing, you know, and certainly we don't, again, not an excuse, but we do talk about which test was first, did they drop in the test that was the first test or the last test, you know? And those are the things that we can't control that, but it helps to know that and how to get addressed that if that is the reality.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, the, the reason for my question is I'm just, I just want to see, because I, I think that we have, if I'm not mistaken, like that, that group has actually gotten better, even though that one chart doesn't look good.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what I just wanted to see.
Yes, you're absolutely right, yeah. And and again, so I didn't have to decide intentionally to, but stopping at eighth grade. I mean, that one, we do have a dip. Again, that's, that's that same group of kids that are currently ninth graders is what we're looking at right now on the screen. It is, I mean, there's no doubt that little math went up, but was it because we were doing something really extra and spending a lot more time on reading intervention?
Right.
Because we really dipped the whole scores up and that there's only so much time, right? Because we're all about the bubble, right? If we spent more time on ELA intervention, did that mean we lost a little bit of time on math and maybe we, we didn't, maybe we didn't make that right call on how to reach it out for ourselves, right? So there's lots of potential things, you know, but we think overall, we're, we're in a really good spot to continue to be at the top of the county. And again, I know these guys talk more about the big highlights where we really stand up.
So first, this was a thank you so much for having me here. Over the summer, when the scores get released, I'm like crazy and I refresh my computer a hundred times and I'm probably one of the only people that does that. But when I saw the scores this year, I sent Becky a text message right away and I was like, oh my gosh, I am so proud of the work that the staff and the students have done here at the high school because they really have stepped out of their comfort. So anything that I've asked them to try to do, give it a chance, each and every one of them has done that. And I truly think that that's a testament to their desire to want to improve the scores as well. So our class of 2026, these are our current seniors that are in front of us, they took the test. So going back to kind of your question, they take the test in 11th grade and that's the test that actually gets reported out and you've wanted for everyone to see, but no one gets to see those three tests that they take beforehand. So ninth grade, 10th grade, they take the PSAT and MSQT as in the fall of 11th grade as that pre-practice, so and for SAT. So you can see the trajectory of the reading and writing in blue, the origin math from when they stepped foot in the doors, their ninth grade year to the growth that they've shown as juniors. This is the work that's been done. And then excitingly, the class of 2027, we have our ninth grade PSAT scores and again, almost the same slope. It's like, I like looked, I'm like, wow, that's so crazy how the amount of growth from ninth to 10th grade, this group of students, so this is our current juniors, they just took the PSAT and MSQT last Tuesday. And so we should get those scores at the beginning of November. Once we do, a hundred percent, I caught them in the spreadsheet, share it with the staff, and then we look at that data and figure out, okay, what do we need to do from October to when they actually take the test in, in the spring? But based on the previous data for this cohort, which again, the slope is almost the exact same, I would anticipate that that growth would continue on that trajectory. So I think I just spoke with, I don't have the eighth grade data on here, I have just the ninth grade and the 10th grade, but that is something that if you're interested in seeing, I would be able to get from the middle school, from their college board tests and can probably add that amount to the spreadsheet too. But I do have nine through ultimately what would be 11. This is the total mean score. So again, if you look at the total of the math and the English added together, that green trend is our current seniors. The purple line, like I said, they've only taken the test twice. Again, their slope is greater than what the class of 2026 was, so hopefully they start continuing on with that trend and increasing. Once again, I'll have those scores hopefully by the beginning of November, which is really great because it does give us time to react before they take the test in the spring. So cohort data is really important to me because I think it's important to look at apples to apples. We're not comparing one group to the next. It's really, where did these kids start, when they stepped foot in this building and where were we able to get them by the time they left or according to the testing as juniors? Looking at our NWEA data, what you're going to see is that the trends of this data over the past three years are following the same data trends as our SAT, PSAT scores. So this is the students ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade over time since fall of 2022. So over the past three years, we focused on NWEA, setting up proper testing environments. What we really did was we listened to the teachers and they said, hey, I think bringing the kids to the media center and testing them in here like a revolving door is not helpful. They're not comfortable, they're not familiar with the computers, they might end up, a desktop versus a Chromebook is different. So we made some just even logistical changes about providing autonomy to the teachers for testing when they want, providing the ability that the students don't have to take all of the English tests back to back, give it the first week, the reading, wait two weeks, and then give the language use. And so some of those just really small changes, I think can make a difference, but also it's taking a look at the data, having those conversations with the students. And so you'll see with the reading since fall of 2022, here's the language since fall of 2022. Again, the 11th grade had a dip in the spring of 2024, but overall, now they're outperforming in NWEA all the other grade levels. I also will just say the light blue line, if you've ever tried to have a senior take NWEA, like two days before, they are walking out the door and you're like, listen, you have to take NWEA, it's your senior's last day. It, it's hard, but like they're still showing growth over time. And then here's the math trends. Again, same thing, the slope's not as great, but you're seeing that, that trending positive scores again, even with the seniors, but that grade 11 green line, they took a dip in 2023, but started outperforming all of their peers by 2025.
I saw that a quick bit there too. And then you'll often see a little dip between a spring score and a fall score. Anyway, again, the blame is not familiar with that, they call it the summer slope or the summer slide, where that's, you know, for the most part, that's summer growth in there. And so kids are, you know, like rolling out of home, reading, doing their math all summer long. And so we do see them come in, in that new grade level, a little lower. And so as long as they regain it, we're, you know, we're in good shape.
Yes, and looking at this, I did only include, like Billy had mentioned earlier, they do take the test three times throughout the year, so the winter data's not on there. But the fall to spring is really looking at that overall growth. And I have some more NWEA data coming up. But with NWEA data, we really focus on our conversations with this in our common planning meetings today. This week, we're focusing on language use. After doing some NWEA training, some of the guidance I was given at the high school level was focus on the language use because no matter what your subject, if you're teaching band, if you're teaching choir, if you're teaching art, if you're teaching science, English, social studies, vocabulary use is the most important and it's a really big bang for your buck if you focus on vocabulary use. So that's kind of where we started our work this year. And so we're going to hone in on strategies and just little things that we can do to help our students' vocabulary use. And so what the teachers had to do prior to coming to the meeting is they had to sort all their students based on their language use scores. And we looked at what does that actually mean? If a student has a 200 in language use, we actually were able to look at what words they know and have a good understanding of, and then also what words that they don't have a good understanding of. So if you have a student that scored a 200 in language use and you're telling them to analyze something, well, this document and this research-backed data from NWEA is showing us that they don't understand what that means. So they're already at that disadvantage. So those are the little things that we're doing as we spend our time together every couple of weeks in common planning. Here's the cohort data for NWEA. So again, just tracking that same group of kids. So blue is our class of 2026, our seniors, orange is our junior class and, oh, I'm sorry, this is all 2026 of math, reading, and language use, I'm sorry. So this is 2026, that was an error on my part, I wish I would have caught that, sorry. But this is their time for those three different subjects.
Don't worry, Becky will remind you.
Oh, I know. She's gonna be like, who made that mistake? And I'm drawing a picture of it. Here's the 2026 one, so sorry about that. So here are our current seniors. If you look at the math, and so that's something that we talked about, if you look, they were slightly below 225. Over from 2022 to 2025, now they're above a 240. So like when you're talking about growth, yes, maybe it's not showing through on the SAT right now or the PSAT, but like it's showing through on this day in our classrooms and this is over a 15-point jump for NWEA over the course of those three years. And so that's why I just definitely share my excitement and how proud I am of the staff because they are putting in the work and it might not show on the one test in one day, but it is showing in a lot of different ways in our classrooms. And then here's 2027. So again, you can see our math looks, that blue line, this is our current juniors, so you can see the trend of language use and reading. And then just a couple of things, really focusing on those building-wide expectations. I think that a lot of times, teachers, just like students, they do like guidance. And so like, hey, what do you want, where do we want to go with this? And so over our course of our time together, we've kind of decided some non-negotiables, especially in terms of SABIS. And so the ELA teachers came up with, they're doing one unit per quarter. They've made an agreement that they're doing whole group, peer group, and independent learning to make sure kids are getting a wide variety of different types of instruction. Our math group, we're meeting as subject area, so we actually have the Algebra I and Geometry meeting separately from the Algebra II teachers, just because they have different needs. And what we're doing is we are literally day by day planning, myself, the instructional coaches, and the teachers, we're having conversations as detailed as what example problems are we sharing with our kids? Because there's so much in SABIS, it can be overwhelming. And so we're planning month by month together. So I just met with the geometry teachers together today and we're planning through November with what their teaching unit, topic two and topic three. They're also receiving support from Stat Black, who is from the MISD, he's a great resource, and so he's coming in five times this year. And then also, really having teachers take ownership and students take ownership in our proficiency goals. So we had discussions in August about what we want those goals to be. Ultimately, I kind of let the teachers decide the subject areas, but we have a lot of conversations that these are all of our goals. Like you might be the culinary teacher, but how are you embedding math into your classroom? And so all of these subjects, we're owners of all of them, no matter what our content title says. And so we collectively came up with these goals for this upcoming testing year. I think it's, yeah. There you go. And so final two points of pride, our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade all hit the building-wide goal of 60%, 60% proficient on the writing and reading test on PSAT. So grade nine, there was 69% are proficient, so they hit the target. Grade 10, 65 proficient, and then grade 11, 62 proficient. So huge accolades to everyone because we really did focus on reading and writing last year. And then also the final thing is that NWEA, they tell you a projected growth for each grade level, for each subject. And all four of our grade levels surpassed the projected growth in not only reading, not only language use, but in math. And so you can see in math, the orange triangle or diamond, I'm sorry, is where they were supposed to grow. The bar graph shows how much they actually grew. So nine, 10, and 11, nine, 10, 11, and 12 hit the mark. For language arts or language use, so this is like the vocabulary grammar, again, the diamond shows where they should have been and we surpassed it. And then in the reading, again, the diamond is where they should have been and then we surpassed it. So all 12, four grade levels, three subjects, all 12 surpassed the projected growth. So that I would say, NWEA-wise, was a huge success for us at the high school. So.
Yes. And John?
Hello, everybody.
You're welcome.
So we're just going to jump right in with NWEA reading. These are our three-year growth trend. So each grade level, starting in 2022 and all the way to 2025, is definitely still showing growth. Again, with dips along the way, but we are still trending in the right direction. This is our language usage, the same thing, still those, you know, ebbs and flows of what our students do from year to year. However, we are still demonstrating that growth, we're still moving in the right direction. So then we have our math, the same thing, so we're definitely seeing trends. But what I find interesting here is here is you're seeing some pretty okay growth. This is where we are planning on our focus being in fifth grade this year at the very beginning of our intervention, which I'll talk about shortly. We are definitely going to be focusing on math. We do see that as one of our biggest areas of where we can show the most growth, where we can, where we. areas of where we can show the most growth, where we definitely need to show more growth. So that's math. So then we have our cohort data for, this is the class of 2030, for eighth grade. And what I really am proud of is that we still continue to show growth. It may not be their grid scores that they're projected to show in NWEA, but we are still showing growth. So you can see that over these three-year trends in both math, reading, and language usage. Same thing with the seventh grade cohort data, we are still continuing to show growth each year. Same thing with our sixth grade, again, maybe not exactly where we want to be, but still demonstrating that growth. And then our fifth grade cohort data, the same, our fifth grade right now is, our current fifth grade right now is where we are showing our greatest need and our biggest concern just across the board, and we are going to make sure that, we have some things already planned in place that we are going to be doing with intervention analysis later shortly. And then our fourth grade, and they are still showing growth, but not quite as much as we want, and so we're going to start with them with reading this year, with our new intervention program that we have that we're really excited about. So we revised or revamped our intervention for fourth and fifth grades. We always are data-driven, no matter what, we use data, that's how we determine what we're going to really target and focus on. This year, we revised it, and we are kind of adopting what Lee has done for the past few years with that all hands-on deck approach. And so all of our teachers are going to be providing intervention for all of our students, along with our interventionists, and our coaches are also going to be assisting. Fourth grade, we are going to start with reading based on the data that we have, and in fifth grade, we are going to start on math based on the data that we have, because we know that those are the areas that are our concern for those specific areas right now. In fifth grade, we're going to continue with the wheel course, I'm sorry, in sixth grade, we're going to continue with the wheel courses. The conversation that I had last week in our first PLC with our sixth grade team, the majority of our sixth grade team, is I kind of picked their brains to find out what they did last year that was so wonderfully successful for the sixth graders who are now seventh graders. Their growth was tremendous. And so we've talked about some things, they've shared some of the things that we are doing or that they were doing, and a lot of it has to do with just the conversations that they have with one another, and how they can best support one another, which I thought was remarkable, because that's what we're doing with everybody this year. And they were just kind of doing it on their own with guidance from us, but even more in-depth, so I'm really excited about that. They were able to share some conversations that they had, they all, they have a shared, they called it a shared philosophy, even though it's our global philosophy, but they are able to have those really intricate conversations with one another to really help support our students. And then they are supporting one another, which was always nice to see. They're kind of all in one little hallway, and it's a great, what they're doing is really great, and we're going to hopefully be able to model it with our other PLCs.
Can you do a quick question?
Sure.
What is meant by a targeted intervention, a real intervention? What does that mean?
Oh, okay. So the wheel courses, I'll start there. The wheel courses is a type of intervention where each of the sixth grade teachers have pulled out a topic from their content area that they are going to focus on. So for example, in math, we have algebraic thinking and geometry, and they choose algebraic thinking and geometry because up until we started SABSS, those were some of the topics that they were not able to get to as thoroughly as they wanted to get to, and those are what kids are ultimately being tested on. But more importantly, it's what really plays the foundation for the math that they go on to as they get older, is that algebraic thinking and geometry. And so for, in sixth grade math, our math teachers pull those two topics out, and each, they divide all of the sixth graders up into six different groups, and they each will go to each of those different areas. So we have algebraic thinking, we have geometry, we have science, literacy and science, we have informational writing and reading, we also have writing support. So we have all these different support classes, six different support classes for our sixth graders to go to, so that they can get that targeted intervention. So they're getting some really good, solid instruction in just a really specific content area. And for the fifth grade, we are doing everything, it's a little bit more open, it's not quite as, it's going to be as focused, but we are doing it in probably six-week cycles, this is kind of new for us, so we're starting just this year. So we're starting our first cycle, that'll go from now until Thanksgiving, and we are going to use the data that we have based from, based on our NWEA data and our IXL benchmark data that they took, and really focus on, in fourth grade, what reading strategies we can use to help our students improve their reading comprehension skills. Or if there's kids that are deficit in writing, they'll go and do, they'll have writing to do as well. So it's just a different approach based on the grade level. So in seventh and the eighth grades, we have math and ELA support classes, we have our math intro classes in seventh and eighth grade, and then we have our targeted reading, which is an ACRI, which is a really focused, very specifically taught ELA support class for our students who are really deficit in reading comprehension. And we're seeing a lot of growth with our kids in those classes, and it's really exciting to see Amanda Turbin is trained in our building and really does a great job with getting our kids to improve in reading. What was really even more important for me as a, as just a person who loves reading, is it gets kids to love reading. And when we know that kids love reading, we know that they're going to improve their reading scores. So it's kind of fun to see those really reluctant readers try and really come out of their shells and be able to talk about books that they're reading, and that's really exciting to see. We are also doing grade level or content area PLCs. We don't have the same type of common planning that they have at the other two buildings, so we've kind of modified it, and it's working for us, which is nice to see. We have our regular meetings every two weeks, everything, of course, is data-driven, and we really want to start empowering our staff to be teacher leaders, and so we're really hoping to find those teachers who are really interested in becoming teacher leaders to help us facilitate our meetings that we have twice a month. We are also going to be, we have our continuous school improvement team meetings that we have at the district level and at the building level, and we are going to be modifying our goals in all of this, which is really exciting. And then one of the things that we were talking about too is if, we know that the wheel courses for sixth grade are really successful, and we may want to consider talking about that type of a model or even a modified model for that for seventh grade moving forward, maybe beginning next year, if that's, if we still see these great successes that we've Sorry. So our five-year continuous school improvement goal for ELA, which was supposed to be achieved by 2028, was already achieved, so we're going to be increasing that goal that year, this year with our staff. We haven't figured out our number quite yet here, in the process of doing that, because we were still waiting on some data to come in. In the spring of 2025, our sixth grade students, as you saw, exceeded the national NWE norms on all three tests, which is also very excited and very exciting. And all grade levels either met or exceeded projected math growth by our, if you can see the same type of graph that Andrea showed you earlier. But I wanted to look at the eighth grade, because by all accounts, our eighth grade should have scored higher on SIF, or I mean, on PSAT last year, and we are waiting on some information to find out exactly where their shortfall was, because we can't figure that out, that's very anomalous, and because we're seeing the data that would have shown them actually performing a little bit better than they did. So we're going to keep a very close eye on that. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but maybe, I don't know. But the, if I am correct, the third graders two years ago, so these fifth graders broke, like, McComb County records. So I'm just like, I mean, has there anybody talked us to like what may have happened?
Well, there's a lot of things that could happen. I mean, we're not making excuses, but the difference between just the fourth and the fifth grade M-Step, as far as readability goes, and level of complexity is quite different. It's a very different test they have or that they take, which becomes very alarming for them.
Sure.
I don't, I don't know why that happened, and I know we see that their SIF scores are just okay, so we don't know, but it's something that we're definitely looking at because we need to, we need to grow.
All right, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm ready, I'm doing the elementary principle, and we're going to talk about data for Will and Lee. So I'm going to focus more on the NWEA piece, so it's going to be a scaffold, excuse me, to get us up to our third grade M-Step. So we're always looking at data, because we know that kind of when they're asked to do essays and asked to perform these tasks, performance tasks, it starts in kindergarten. So they don't just learn how to do essays, right, in third grade, so we all take accountability for that. So something really cool with our preschool program, I wanted to point out, is kindergartners on the left-hand side, that's where they came in to us in the fall, so that's where we kind of got them at, if you will. So you can see the yellow is 50th percent proficiency, so that means they're already performing 50% above their norms, their peers. And then to move into the green, you have to be in the 60th percentile, which is considered proficient. So what I think is awesome is our preschool program helps our students be kindergarten-ready, because in the fall, before we've really even done any instruction, they're already at the 50th percentile. So that's a great gain already, so that way we can really focus more. And then if you go to the left-hand side, you look at the spring, and they're at the 62nd percentile. So basically, we want to squeeze the yellow, the orange, and the green, and we want to grow the green and the blue, and so you can kind of see that happening throughout the grade levels. First grade, 61st goes to the 68th, second grade, 64th to the 67th, and then third grade, 59th to the 67th. So that's, we want to increase proficiency and continue that. So they're doing that, and we're meeting our goals that way. Again, you've seen this with the observed growth, we continue to surpass any projected growth, so that has a lot to say why we are performing at a high level on the M-Step. This is reading. And then this is our language usage, second and third grade take it. We are seeing a lot of really awesome gains here, it's been a focus of ours, to piggyback off what Miss Dabo said, we know vocabulary is essential. What's really neat is that when they take this test, second graders have to read it on their own in kindergarten, and first it was read for them. So this also shows that, not just that they know the skill level of language usage and grammar and all of that, but they're also able to read complex questions to get the answers. So that gives us a really nice idea of what they're going to be able to do in the M-Step. So as you can see, it really all kind of tracks. So we were at the 54th percentile in the fall, and then we grew to the 71st in the spring, so we're really proud of that. And then again, projected growth, and then the actual observed growth, so way above where we would expect them to be. This is our math, so they came to us in the fall at the 63rd, and then ended in the 74th. If you want to, if you look at the blue and the green line, and you see that there's great gains there, and we're squeezing down the yellow and the reds. And again, projected growth and expected growth, so we've surpassed both of those. And our trend data. So the orange is the math, and the blue is the ELA, so our math, we're super proud, our math continues to stay at the 60th percentile proficiency, which is way above the state average, is at the top of the county continuously. We have two brand-new teachers last year, so I just sing their praises, because when you have two, one new to the profession, one new to the district, and when they can come in and still have this type of proficiency, it tells you that it's about the expectation of the building, the non-negotiables, the curriculum, the support, and just kind of the laid-out expectation for what we want for our kids. So it's kind of like, if we can get a teacher that's dedicated and we put them in that spot, they're going to be able to get this resolved, because the groundwork is already laid there in our building, and so we're super proud of that, having some new teachers and still having that, you know, as a principal, you're like, okay, this is going to be a learning curve, and then we still, I just applaud them, because we were still able to stay there. For ELA, we all recognize that there's a little bit of a downward trend, we're at 49.5%, still hovering over that 50. So we're still very, we're still in the very high end of McComb County by far, but we still recognize that we have a new curriculum this year, and that was tough, and so I loved hearing the conversations, like after they administered the M-Step, you know, we got to do more close reading, we got to look more in our first reads, you know, there's no doubt about it, we got to stop and highlight, we need to do more race writing. So they pick up right away on kind of what they know they need to do. So I feel very confident in next year's growth for ELA. And then this is our cohort data, so ELA's blue, math is orange, as you can see, so they kind of, as you can see, we kind of, in kindergarten is where we got them, I like to say, and then in second grade, we kind of continue to keep that level playing field of proficiency. So we're not like having any kind of drops, or we're having to like catch up or have any kind of large concerns. I do want to thank the board for supporting the Title I department. Research says that early on intervention is important, and it is one of our big apples, because then we're spending time catching up on kids, you know, all down the road, and if we can catch some of our emergent readers that struggle right away, then we're going to catch that virus if you can, so that way we can continue these. So having interventions is critical. Right now, we're servicing 40 students that are below grade level that we've identified. We have a criteria of seven things, so we're very intentional. You know, maybe they were retention, maybe they were, you know, different factors, I could go on and on, but they're servicing them and pulling out and helping them with some of these holes that they may have, so.
Could I ask just one thing?
Yes.
Do they test the NWE? Do they, are there a lot of questions on spelling?
So not necessarily spelling, but the pattern, so CVC words and phonemes, so it's not necessarily spelling, but they're going to want to know if you can do the spelling pattern, maybe pell with AI. So it's more of a pattern, if you will, but yeah, a little bit. Yeah. I know there's a lot of rapid word about spelling, and kind of there's research out there, like with homework, so it's one of those kind of like questionable types of things. Super exciting news as far as that goes, that I think might help kind of answer this question, and the way that we're headed, is that I went working with Mrs. Maniac, and we're getting science of reading training for our teachers for all of our next DPBD days, and we know the science of reading works, and we know the schools that have really adopted it with fidelity, it is working. It's basically learning how to read and how the brain says that we need to learn to read. So we're going to be doing a lot more focusing on the science of reading and improving some of our practices that way. So you might see a little less spelling and a little bit more of the science reading.
Is it more phonics?
It's more phonics-based, yeah. Like we do Haggerty, which is a research-based program, and it's a lot of like substitutions and additions and phonemes, and so we're trying to focus more on that than just the actual spelling.
That's a good question.
Okay. And then our next step, so we're continuing to create intentional skill groups, so as soon as our students test in the fall, we meet at a grade level, and we say, okay, what five kids need suffixes? Let's pull the data, and that's our small group. So the kids, it's fun, I walk into a classroom, I'm like, what's your small group? They're like, you know, I'm in, I was in the series, and then once I learned that, then I'm going to be heading to informational tech, so they have a really good roadmap of where they're supposed to go. That's why we love like the winter NWE too, because it really is about driving instruction. So teachers are like, honey, they already met their goal, but now they like have a higher one. It's like, yes, they do. This is the goal, this is what we want. So NWE has done a great job at, once students meet their projected growth, they're continuing to give them a higher goal, and teachers are rising to the occasion. So in our PLCs, we talk a lot about what do most of our kids need with the NWE, these skills, things like that, so. Then we do weekly checkups, so we have our SABSS curriculum, and it offers a weekly checkup in math and in reading, so that's one of our promises or non-negotiables commitments to our students, that every student will get a weekly checkup every week, because that's going to Every week because that's going to tell us where they're at and where they're falling behind. We just don't, we just want to be careful that we're, we meet the temperature on students more often, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Exit tickets daily can sometimes be too much to ask, but weekly isn't. And so this allows us to kind of keep moving. And then number three goes along with identifying the holes in the ELA, we noticed. So we're doing a letters, a type of letters trading with the science of reading. And then we also are currently doing an ESGI assessment data. So what that means basically is it's very cut and dry. Parents are loving it. Does my child know these sight words? Does my child know how to count to 100? Print's a beautiful report. And some of our parents are really on board with what does my child need because I want to help at home? And sometimes teachers struggle to really give them that like black and white. You know, you're not an educator, but how can I tell you how to help at home? And so parents are loving that based on feedback from conferences. They're like, oh, I can make flashcards. I can do this. You know, I can help them with addition. Like I know exactly what they need. So this new assessment data that we've adopted has been really helpful to get our parents more involved in their comfort level with our students. And then our points of pride, we continue to outperform the entire county in mathematics for the fourth year in a row. We have stayed consistently over the 60th percentile in math. And then student proficiency increased in every grade in NWA in every subject area. So we're meeting our projected growth in every subject area. So those are things we're very proud of. Any questions? You guys did a good job seeing attention there. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here with us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is a power school litigation lawsuit. Who's for it?
So at the next board meeting, unless you give me a different direction tonight, I would be recommending that the district join a power school litigation lawsuit. As I mentioned, or if you recall back in December of '24, nationwide, power school had a breach of student data. And I followed up with a conversation with our ISD, really all of the 21 districts. And we confirmed that there has been no breach of data of Richmond students or anybody in the county. So we're not necessarily being affected by the power school issue that happened nationwide. However, there was a, there has been a class action lawsuit that has been filed that allows districts affected and not affected to be part of it. You might be asking what would be the benefit of joining a lawsuit if you're not affected? Whatever the settlement is in the lawsuit, and it might be, again, it could be anything, but it could be a financial dollars to district to help them support servers and infrastructure to protect student data. If we don't join the lawsuit, the only way we would get that is if we filed our own lawsuit. There is no cost to the district through this lawsuit. We'd be part of a class action lawsuit. Trune clients, the attorney, they take a certain amount of million-dollar settlement. They take a certain percentage off the top. That's the standard practice. Because we're Trune, it's coming through Trune's resolutions over, Trune would be paid through that settlement, whatever they're taking off the top. So remaining dollars would be given up, whatever, whatever the settlement is to the other districts. And again, I just think it would be in our best interest to join this. Again, it doesn't cost us anything. There's no attorney fees we're paying, but if there is a settlement in the long run, we would then be able to benefit from that, that settlement. Again, it could be dollars to districts that help pay for infrastructure services like filters and firewalls and so forth. The, in your packet, I gave you kind of a summary of guidance that Trune put out. That's, that's, that one main summary that took you through there. And you'll also see a sample resolution that would come to the board at the next meeting. Again, this is the resolution that Trune has put together for all of their clients. That's kind of the nutshell.
So should there be a settlement, monetary value settlement, then we could get a percentage of that or whatever? But there, there's, but as far as like if they're ordered to change something infrastructurally themselves, like
Needing power school skills.
Then we would still reap the benefits of that, correct?
I think the thing I want to stress is
Whether, I'm sorry, whether we're in the lawsuit or not.
That if they're ordered to change something, yeah.
But we can still, right?
But I just want to add, and you guys who've gone to the county board, you know, our county does things very differently than the state. The amount of security that they put on to protect our student information is far over better than, I mean, it's just unbelievable. But I guess from your perspective, yes, if power schools required to make changes, we're going to reap that benefit regardless of the lawsuit. If there's a settlement, I would speculate those that are most harmed are going to have some tiered support and those that are least harmed would have a lesser tier. If it's a monetary settlement. Again, I'm speculating.
So
This will allow us to join that lawsuit.
Okay. So if we were to, if we were to agree to join this lawsuit, what, what would we have to do? Like, do we have to give them any information? Do we have to use any man hours? I guess, would we have to like, you know, I don't know, Cynthia's or whoever's hours, I guess, yours to collect data?
At, at this point, unless it's a court ordered collection, there's no data that we're turning over.
But if we're actually in the lawsuit, we could be ordered to.
There could be.
Or subpoena.
There, there could be. You're correct. There could be. Are, are, if they're going to probably want to find out, did you have a data breach? Our answer is no, we did not. So they're probably going to put us in one group. And those that did have data breach, they'll probably get more specific. Okay, what time and energy? Who, who did you have to kind of stop the data breach? Who did you, what did you have to put in place? What costs did you have associated with it? I can definitely see that for those that have that factor.
Right.
I guess my only concern also would be if it's monetary, if there's going to be any type to it. So you can only use money towards upgrading to something that maybe then would force the ISD to change into something that would be less secure for data breach, but more control for power school.
I would think there would be a lot of resistance from our ISD to call for the standard because they have always, with everything I've ever done, they go well beyond the minimum. Knowing Mark Cummings, who's the director of the IT, he is the, I want to say this very lightly. He's a guru of that asset, but he is, he is probably at the forefront of pushing companies to be more in compliance and having a higher standard than anybody I've been interacting with.
I would think the benefits of a lawsuit would have to be doing less.
I could see them saying the money has to go towards filter systems or your technology to prevent it. I can see those strings that you mentioned, but I don't, again, I'm not part of it. You know, Trune is, is recommending that districts, their position is recommending if you had a breach or not, join the lawsuit. You're only benefiting from a settlement in whatever the settlement is.
Yeah, I don't see any, any drawbacks from what I'm hearing, but are there any if, if we don't join this?
If, I, the drawback that we would have if we don't join it and we want to file our own lawsuits, then our cost, we pay the attorney for our cost. Where the attorney, the company that's doing the class action, the register of like on the name. Friends, they're taking their costs off the top, much like any attorney, 30 or 40 percent of that number is.
Yeah, because isn't it, isn't ultimately what this is, say something as the lawsuit's going on down the road, something comes up that we possibly would want to get into it. We're already in it. So that we don't have to get our own attorneys to do it. That's ultimately what this, what we're doing here, right?
That's, and I would compare this, is this a little different than the vaping, e-cigarettes lawsuit that was out there? In that case, a district had to show what harm has been done to the district to join that lawsuit. This is regardless.
Which that seems just, I mean, I believe you. I just, that seems so odd to me that regardless if you're a victim of anything that you would we have multiple lawsuits. And then of course
There's been multiple lawsuits for the vaping.
Yeah.
The one that we were approached on with our attorney saying, and this was years ago, this isn't something new. You had to demonstrate what harms did you have in your district to be able to get the, to reap those costs back.
Right. I'm just a little usually leery of class action lawsuits.
So I guess I would just leave it. It's, this is going to sit out there for two weeks. We have to give it, I think it's by December, December 31st, we have to, December 31st, we have to commit, send. So at some point we pass it. If there are any questions between now and next one, or if someone doesn't want to participate, I kind of bring this to the next meeting for approval of the resolutions in your packet.
Do we know if any of the other 21 districts are working?
I don't. In my conversations with the superintendents, they're all in this process right now with their boards determining, do you want to, do you want to do it or not? Some board, some schools have a once-a-month board meeting. They may not get to it, whatever. Some have twice a month like we did, so. I'm going to keep track and figure out, but not all McComb County or Trune law. So they might get this from their attorney a different way too.
Any other questions? Next item on our agenda is our MSBA delegate assembly resolutions next Thursday. I would be, Brad Travis to vote on, to vote for our district. There are only three resolutions this year, which last year they had a lot of other things. So I just want to get input real quick. The first resolution is G5.42. It's about assessments and competency testing. They want to change is assessments or competency tests should also include reasonable testing windows that do not significantly reduce the time available for student instruction. The creation, development, and refinement of the state K-12 content standards and state standardized assessments should be led by K-12 educators and child development experts. And the MASB supports the publication of a comprehensive list of authors and contributors to the state K-12 content standards and state standardized assessments to promote transparency and the participation of K-12 educators and child development experts. Their rationale for this one resolution is the committee wanted to emphasize that the assessments should be written by those with experience and expertise in education and in making assessment grades appropriate. Anyone have a concern or any thoughts or comments on that one?
Yeah. It's currently involved in developing the academic standards and the content expectations. And kind of what's the current process on that?
But content expectations are developed under the direction of the Michigan Department of Education. So oftentimes, I'll speak to the last one that I was part of. There'll be someone who oversees it. They'll have groups of leaders throughout the state. It might be the ISD curriculum people in ELA that are all getting together and they'll review them and then they'll make a recommendation to the State Board of Education. But there's a process. They have to put it out for vetting for public comment. They take that public comment and adjust the standards or tweak it. I'm sure there's a whole lot of other stuff that I know through about. And then ultimately go back to the State Board for approval. Generally, they're pulling in experts around the state in that, in that field.
Basically, Ray, what this, what this is, MASB is just a group. And these, these things in their handbook, their delegate is, is school boards around the state supporting what's happening with the Department of Education is, is we're saying we would like this, this stuff to happen in these three hearings. And we're, we're not voting that, that
It happens.
That we have the ability to make these things happen. That is not what this is. We're just basically, MASB is just a group of people, school board members, that are saying, we, we support the Michigan Department of Education in this and we want part of our bylaws, if you will, of MASB. And that's what, that's what we're, that's what we're voting on. So we're saying Richmond schools, these three things that they want to tweak for this year's delegates, these are three things they want to tweak and they want to know what districts throughout the state are in agreement to tweak this, to put into their handbook, to put into their delegate stuff. So when they go out around the state and talk about things, when they go to Lansing, when they go, that this is what they're representing, that all the districts in the state of Michigan are saying, this is, this is what we're supporting. So they're representing us when they are going to the Department of Ed, are going to the legislature. That's basically what this is. We're just saying, yes, we're, yes, we, we, we agree. We're in favor with this. Richmond schools would like MASB to keep up the fight. In my opinion, that's basically what this is.
Right. So, so how I'm interpreting it, so it's basically, it's, it's the same as if, you know, like the Richmond Board of Education created the curriculum and put that together. Just at a much higher level, but the process is still the same.
No.
Where, you know?
No, 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 no. We're, this, MASB is not creating anything. The Michigan Department of Education is. The Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB, of which we are a part of, and districts throughout the state of Michigan are a part of. And we go to their conferences and, and we are, we can access help from them and different stuff. They, they go out, there are people, those delegates that we voted for, those people we voted for a few months ago to represent our region. Remember those, those people that we got there? Okay. Those people go out and they go to Lansing and they go to the legislature and they're representing our region, fighting for education things that, that they want. They're, we're not, we don't set any policies. We don't set anything that happens educationally in Michigan. The Department of Education does that. What we're doing as a group, we're trying to support that and saying, we want these things to continue. So that's what we're, that's what these things that we're voting on. We're saying, we support these three things, Richmond schools, Board of Education. We support these three things. We want them to continue to fight, fighting these things. Go to Lansing, go to do whatever. And when Deb goes to the conference next week, she will cast her vote saying, yes, keep these in the handbook, amend these things, keep these in, keep fighting this stuff. That's what we're voting on. We're not, we're not making any, not like how we make our policies to how we run our district and how we have our curriculum work. We're not doing any of that. That's done at the Michigan Department of Ed.
Right. And, but what I'm saying is, it's my understanding that even at that level, part of that process includes community input. And according to these amendments, it's specifically stating that it's requesting that the, you know, the proposed amendments for establishing the curriculum standards for the state, you know, should be developed and decided by only, and I quote, "those most qualified educators and experts", which would exclude any community input. And so that's, that's what my concern would be because two of the, the three paragraphs state that they're looking for specifically only, you know, to be decided on by those, what they decide is, is the most qualified educators and experts. That excludes community input. And I'm concerned with that.
Okay. But I would hope as a school board member and anybody, that I want people who are studying educational policies, like if you look at what's happening in Lansing, and you know, I'll get on my little political soapbox, when we have legislators that are making policies in Lansing, educational stuff, they have no educational background whatsoever. That's what this, that's what we're talking about, that if we're going to make second curriculums, the Department of Ed, the people that are doing this, they should have an educational background. That's what this is saying. The most educated people with education The most educated people with education backgrounds are the ones who should be creating the curriculums and things that are happening in our public education.
Right. But the curriculum, part of the process is, and it's kind of, I guess, it checks and balances in my mind, but part of that curriculum decision, the input is from the community based off their values and what is to be included, and these amendments would exclude that.
Except for, I mean, the community voted the board members in to be their voice.
Correct.
But I, I would also just say that, so just if we vote, even if we voted, was that like we're voting to change it here? We're voting whether or not we support the MASB and that create additional-
In the, in these, that's it.
We're not, even if we say, even if everybody on the board here says, you know, yeah, we support this or whatever, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that any of it's going to happen.
Correct.
Right. If I'm understanding, I think the concern would be, is if the Michigan Department of Education said, take our early childhood, we're going to hire these early childhood specialists to develop the curriculum. Whatever they say is in. But the policy of the state is, it has to go open for public comment. You have to post it to gather that difference, much like when we, at the federal level, when they did, changed any policy or, I have nine, the best example, thousands of people gave their two cents in that, and then they're supposed to take that and reformulate to incorporate that community in there. This is just saying, those are going to start the process, need to be the ones that have the most experience in the process. It's not, I, I don't think they're saying the, the community input's not, because that's part of the MBE.
Their process.
Their process. Where I would think you could be concerned as a board member, if MD says, we're no longer going to gather community input, that would be, I would think, sending red flags up for everybody.
Yes.
Why? What's, what are you afraid of, or what are you hiding, or whatever that case would be? So there's-
Well, that's, and that's what I'm saying, is, is in the verb, it, it states, it's amending or requesting the amendment to be, that, that curriculum standards that they developed and decided on by only the most qualified, you know, and then educators and experts. So that's, right in, that's what it states. That's why I'm concerned.
I guess I would rather, I, because I see, I hear what you're saying, Ray, because I, I do, you know, there, there is a place for community parent input. If I had to choose, though, I would rather experts in the field who are seeking out input from community members make the ultimate decision versus the opposite, which would be people with no expertise in it, who may or may not seek out input from the experts making the decision. Because I think the other way, the way it's written, gives us the best shot, because it's starting with the expertise, and then hopefully they're eliciting that information from community members, parents.
Right.
I think the other way, and we saw this when I was on the board the last time, some legislator on the west side of the state, I think Colin, when she came up with that third grade reading bill, remember that, what debacle that was? And that was just horrible. And I don't think she had any expertise in education or third grade reading. And I remember, that was such a hot topic that we had on the board at the time, and we were just like, so you're just going to hold back any third grader because they don't, you know, score, and what if they had a bad day, or what, I mean, there were so many things that, you know, happened with that. So I would rather it the way that it's written, and I'm just going to hope that they're going to elicit input from community, community members. That's where my concern is.
Yeah. And I'm not saying that the community members should, like, have a waiting decision, like, their, their input should be more than, than the educators. I'm not saying that at all. It just, as I interpret this, it eliminates that altogether. That's all.
Okay. Any other concern on that? Okay. The next one is about the family involvement in the schools, and the only thing that they are adding to this one is that MASB encourages districts to provide activities designed to increase family in school, and then it adds one more sentence, "This involvement would enhance school opportunities and functions to continue to work toward the best interest of its students." Any comments on that one?
Support, yes.
Okay. And then the last, the last change, well, the rationale on that one is to emphasize always working towards the best interest of our students. Okay. The last one talks about curriculum and standards. The standards and content level expectations should be developed by educators with expertise in education and child development. And again, it's that same rationale. Committee again wanted to stress the need for educators and experts to draft standards and content level expectations to make sure that is done in the best way for our students. Any concerns on that one? Okay. I will be voting on those next Thursday.
So there's a resolution.
Yeah. And that's if, if you guys agree to it. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the first reading of our, I can't get the words right. Thank you. A school building, Mr. Mosley.
So this, this policy was put in place many, many years ago, 2018, if I remember correctly. And it was a process that how we named buildings or facilities, et cetera, on the, on the district. And once we had it placed, I think our first test of this was really the, the Coker Field and the Ben Bolts, we renamed the Ben Bolt Stadium, and we went through that process. So after we had gone through this, and there was like Margaret and Kyle, who's been on the board, and, the third person, there were the three board members that we had at committee, we did the review of it, and then it came back to the board for approval. But after that process, it was discussed about, should there be limits on how many years a person needs to be removed, deceased, and so forth? So it was brought back up. I went through and I put in a copy of the previous minutes from board meeting, so you kind of see the, the process that went through, and there's other things in those minutes, but we never did that part of the process. And so here before you is, again, I had taken what notes I found on my stuff and drafted kind of a sample. I'm not saying this is, this is a policy that we wrote as a district. It was based off on the old policy when we did Neolas, and then we tweaked it to make improvements. There is no current true policy for this, other than the board has the discretion to do this. And so.
Basically, at that time, when, when we did it, when we went through everything with John Cope, when we talked about just looking at the policy more thoroughly, there was a lot of motion involved, involved at the time with John, when we talked about when we're doing something like that, should someone be retired, somebody like retired five years, maybe deceased, you know, that kind of thing? And with our Hall of Fame, Hall of Honor, that is what some of the criteria would have to be, retired, all of that. And it just, just with the last ceremony, just brought that back up with me, the conversation. I went and I was looking at the policy, and so I just asked Brian, you know what, we, we never really finished that policy. So that's, that's why it's come here, of just setting something more, more in place of being more removed, I guess, five years retired, or if someone may need to be deceased, because we talked at the time, if we, if we name something, if we name a building after someone, and then something happens, because there was a district down the road that had a building named after somebody, and they did something that was illegal, and they had to take the name off the building and that kind of stuff. And so I believe that they changed, then you had to be deceased, you know, so that they, they-
So, you know, I mean, I'm trying to, you know what I'm saying, but to keep the, the district from, you know, that's awful to have to have something named and then have to take it down, and it's not good for the district, it's not good for the family, all of that. So I just was looking to see if we amend or however, add something.
We don't even have one, right, right now?
Yes.
The current, the policy that's in your pack.
Yes.
Other than the blue and the red, is our current policy.
Yes.
That was, yeah. So the, some of the changes that I, I just proposed on here on the very first page under nomination, correct, the names, the board members, administrative teachers, community matches the top part. That, that's the only reason why I put that change there. I put language in there, again, I went through, back through all my old notes, and that had to be nominated, it's kind of twofold. If it's a student that's being nominated, they had to been enrolled in Richmond Community Schools. And the second one, nominees who were previously employed by the district, must have been retired from the district for at least, and you can pick a date, or you could say have been deceased before you get, you know, something named after you. And then on the second page, it talks about, it just kind of clears up, and so forth. And then on the second page, it adds that, or student nominations for a number of years ago. You, there could be a situation, you have a student goes here, something happened, and you want to name a facility after that student. And I think part of the conversation at the time was, we're trying to do, follow a process that's fair for anybody, but yet you're in a time where there's a lot of emotions about what just happened. And so it was just kind of a, put a policy in place that here's how we do it, here's how we name buildings or, or something.
Currently, the only situation they have is the Coker Stadium? Is that the only?
You have the Coker Field and the Ben Bolt Stadium.
Okay.
So when you walk up to the ticket booth, you'll see above there it says Ben Bolt Stadium. And then when you go out in the field, and then the artist says Coker Field. There are various trees around here, like there was a project, 2009, six, where there's a lot of plaques by trees. And that might be something you, you want, and I'll be honest, we had a PTO, I did not follow this policy that happened on that one, but it kind of reiterates that if we're going to do something, we have, I don't have anything else in my, I can think of off the top of my head.
Our, our, what is, our, over there, that kind of?
Bench?
That, or something. Yeah. It was a bench, we had to take down or something.
Yeah.
Because it was like deteriorating.
And part of that policy says that if you're, there's no obligation that, like, for instance, there's a community service, Eagle Scout project out by the board office, it's not a donation, and that person, they just donated a bench, so we had to put it, so let's assume 15 years from now that bench is beyond repair, there's no obligation that the board has to put a new bench in there. You could, you obviously have that ability to do, but if, if the maintenance of it and all that is taken into consideration. This is really just guiding, do you want something to be named after someone, them to be out of the district, or to be removed from the district so many years, or do you want them to be deceased before something gets named? The new science wing, there's been people who wanted to name the science wing after Virginia Wood, a former science teacher, you know, this would be the process they'd do. And it, it's actually a very good policy, when you look at, there's steps you got to do, you got to get nominations, you got to get people buying, if there's a cost, and I don't know if I shared, I didn't share the Coker stuff, but there was a cost, they had a budget, they had to raise money for it, there's some things that we helped them to get it going, but they had to repay the district back, I mean, I think a very-
Yeah. For me, I've been definitely in support of something like this. And for me, I don't think a administrator, staff member, or employee would need to be retired for more than five years. I think if they're retired, and then, you know, immediately after, that's a process that they could be into it. Or a student, for me, wouldn't necessarily, well, I guess, would likely have to graduate, or unless, you know, they were deceased, then, you know, like a memorial name or something could be placed, you know, that could be put in the policy. But I, I think something like this would be awesome, would be great.
So what I'm looking for is this language that I've added primarily on the first page.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to the board? And then if it is, what's the number? Whether it's separated, retired, or deceased, what's the number of years that we would think would be standard?
So when you cross out current or former board members, and you just have board members, is it current then, or is it current or former?
I took the language at the top. If you look at the first paragraph, it says from board administration. I look at a, I look at a former board member, it's falling into the, the community realm at that point. So they are members of the Richmond community.
Okay. So when you say nominations from board members, you are referring to current?
It would be current board member, and Kyle Simmons, who's no longer here, he would be a community member or-
Even if they don't live in Richmond anymore?
Well, I mean, that's probably a bad example, because he doesn't live there.
Right.
Tracy Bartels, who's on the board, she had short time.
She'd be a community.
She'd be a community member. That's why I was all kind of, but you guys, do you guys want current or?
No, I just didn't know if we were, because you asked both of them out, I didn't know what-
What I, what I did was I tried to mask language in the first paragraph, so that there wasn't conflict. That's right.
I mean, I, I looked at it earlier.
I just kind of, it's fine. I'm going to do five years, because that's what's been done with the Hall of Honor and Hall of Fame.
Right.
And it kind of then flows through with, you know, we do it with that, you know what I mean, that's-
So five years removed?
Yeah.
I find one down. And then I find the verbiage that you have, that we have.
Five years were deceased? Did you deceased five years or?
I think just five years removed from, that's what, I mean, that's the verbiage that the Hall of Honor and the Hall of Fame use anyways.
It does say five years removed.
Yes. So you have to be retired for five years, or whatever, but then the situation does come into play when maybe you do want to do a memorial type thing for an unfortunate situation of, you know, a deceased staff member or something, unfortunately. I don't know that you want to wait a whole five years removed.
But, but I think what, what Ray, what Ray said, though, if, if a student or a staff member passes away, and there is some kind of memorial, plaque, like a tree that gets planted, we have that, we already have a policy.
Okay.
On that, right?
I don't think we-
Yes, we do, don't we? Isn't there, isn't there a policy about putting, erecting, so could we erecting something?
That's this.
So could we?
Yeah. That's what I was saying.
Ben or tree, object.
Yeah.
That's this.
But could we say deceased or five years removed? Couldn't we say that? Oh, yeah, I guess.
I guess I'm going to go back to what Ryan said about just the high emotions that comes with somebody who passes. I mean, if somebody in the community passes, and their family might want them to be memorialized, right, so they're going to bring it to us, and then the board has to then say, you know, what if in the moment we're not feeling like that? And then we're telling that family who just lost somebody, very important to them, that we don't feel like that person was enough for it.
No, that's a good point.
And so I think if they-
Sarah, that is very, very valid.
I, I really think that, especially because we're naming a thing for 10 years, like a stadium, and we're talking about potentially taking a different name down, putting a new name up. So I, yeah, I think-
Or, or just creating something.
Yeah.
You're right. That's where I'm saying, how the emotion part comes in.
So then just those five, just do the five years.
I think I, because this is kind of the fun one, too, when we had that one public comment, the gentleman come in, his job, okay.
No.
Because that was some, a plaque that was put up, that we then-
That's, that's we was all taking care of.
Yeah.
That was, that was a start, that was dedicated. It got taken down.
We need to remodel again, or-
You, you risked that, yes, you did.
Yeah.
But, yeah, just the whole-
But if you say, if you're saying just five years removed.
Yeah.
Yeah. How does that, how does that be deceased, come?
Well, it's-
You're removed five years. You have to be, it would have to be five years.
Deceased, past five years.
Or, you said or?
No, initially I did, then Sarah made that, that comment, and I thought that that was a silver point, yeah.
So if you lock the language that's in, and just put five or both of those spots.
Yeah, that's what I think.
No, it says in here all three, because it says nominees who were enrolled in Richmond Community Schools must have been separated from the district for at least five years. But then at the next paragraph, it says, previously employed, must have been retired for five years, separated from the district employment for five years, or deceased. So it says all three.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we just put five, five for all of them.
Because that does take the, Ray, that does take the emotion part out of it, and what's the criteria, yeah. let's, let's the criteria, yeah.
Yeah, because what if it is, like you were saying, someone we disagree with or want to see.
That's a really tough thing to say, someone who's like.
I know, exactly.
And then the policy does have the board, except it comes to you appoint a subcommittee, they do all the work, and then that committee comes back to the whole board, which is what happened at the Ben Bolts and.
Was there a reason we took it from three to up to three?
When I looked at the minutes, some of the meetings, we had two, there was an absent one, again, I can't think of the third person who sat in the room.
I can't, because whoever the third person didn't show up at the meetings that we had asked.
So up to, and what my thought was, if they didn't show up, or if you only had, if you wanted to have the time to do it, you just can't have more than, because now you got to form a board.
Okay.
So that's right, that's where my thought was.
That's what I remember it being, that the third person couldn't, we, we met.
Who was Chris?
Chris, or do you want to say? You know, something, so then we were just like, that's okay, we'll do it, you know, just, just the two of us, because we just had the ability to meet at the time of day that, however.
So that's my.
Yeah, okay. Everything else?
Anything else we want to change on it, or wrong good? Okay, so you'll know what to put in, and we'll know that. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. Sandy, anybody? No, not Sandy. Okay, Sarah?
Just to say thanks to the building administrators that came out, put together that really nice presentation, very thorough, very detailed, and I think it helps us just kind of get an idea of what that, that issue, so thanks for all their time.
Yep, Danielle?
What's up?
Uh, and Margaret?
Yeah, I just wanted to, last week, I have Brian sent us something, it was Custodian Day, so I just wanted to, in front of the cameras, rave our custodial staff, we do have great custodians in this district, our buildings look great, so thank you to them. It is Principals Month, so I want to acknowledge all of our principals and assistant principals. We truly have great staff in all my years, being on the board and being around this district, this is just the, the best unit of administrators working together, it's just, it's just really, really good to see, and proud to have them as our administrators. Thanks to Sandy for the scarecrow, and Candace and Deb for their little extra, the, the board put a scarecrow for the, for Carson Rec, for Carson Rec Contest, so thank you to them, those guys. The Hall of Fame, Hall of Honor Ceremony was after our last board meeting, and just a shout out, Cynthia, thank you for all that you do to make that go well, and for putting up with me when we're getting all our seating arrangements ready, but to our food service staff, Candy, Dar, and the custodial staff, they just make the whole area look great. Brian, for all the work that you do, that you help the foundation, and that, with the athletic department, and Preston Trend, it was a great ceremony, so thank you.
Ray?
Uh, yep, I want to give a big shout out to the, the High School Marching Band. On Tuesday, October seventh, they participated in a MSBOA District sixteen marching band festival, which was held out in, I believe it's East China, and they earned a first division rating in their class division, so they received eight A's out of a possible nine subcategories, so it's the top overall rating on a band that can be earned at the festival, so I just want to give a shout out to them, and congratulations, they did a great job.
Thank you. Um, yes, I just want to echo that also, great job to Ms. Jack and the marching band for, for Division One rating, they worked really hard, and it was a cold rainy night, but they did awesome, and same thing, Sandy, thanks for the owl, you were cracking this amazing owl.
I don't want to interrupt during your rave, but the owl was technically Candace's idea, I just brought it to life.
No, you achieved it, it's, I felt bad covering it up with the little, because it was so cute, like, like a face. And Margaret, is that, is that on the Richmond TV, or have they been waiting to, waiting to watch it?
The ceremony?
Yeah.
It is on the website.
On the, about us, it's on their Hall of Honor, the video link is there, and the pictures are there too.
It was awesome last year, so.
It's even better. It's our best one so far.
Okay. Um, I think that's, that's it.
Everybody's hidden mine, but I'm gonna say them again, I too want to acknowledge our principals, we had almost all of them here this evening, I just want to thank them for their commitment, their countless hours, being here late, and just making a difference in our community, so happy principal appreciation. I would also like to thank everybody who had a piece in the Hall of Fame, I have never been to one, this was my first time, I was so impressed, and it was so, first off, it was cool to see kids that I knew, and what they were doing, and that was really neat, but just listening to some of the people, some of our veteran people that were there, I was going to say older, but they had so much to talk about as far as the community, and what this community has done for them, and it was just, it was just amazing, and then, like, how many people came to honor that one person, or they, there was one family that had like two rows of people that were there, it was just very, I was very impressed. Again, I haven't been to one, I was just very, very impressed, so I just, anybody who was involved in it, and what you did, and how you put it together, it was truly amazing. It's something we need to rave more about, because it was really, really, very well meant. And then my last item, I want to acknowledge, Brian shared an email with us, our eighth grade volleyball team, I just want to acknowledge the team, the parents, the coach, one of our eighth grade players lost a parent recently, and during the game at Emily City, the young lady broke down, but our team, our coaches, our parents, they surrounded her, and they supported her, and the next day, Emily City, the principal from Emily City Middle School contacted Mrs. Morella, and she, he praised our kids and our community for the actions that they took that evening, he said it was just amazing to see, again, I talk about our community pulling together for someone in need, so I just want to acknowledge that whole group for what they did for this young lady, and that's all that I have. Okay, next item up is our, our students, so Pelsey and Elizabeth, it's on you now.
So we're gonna start at the high school, they're still celebrating October's College Month with spirit days, like, I think it was like, Weird College here today, and then they are also including fifteen college visits, and there's QR codes in the hallways for the students to sign up, I think there was one today for Calvin University, maybe, I'm not sure. Last week, we had eighteen students attend Manufacturing Day at Academy Pie, a huge thank you to them for opening their doors to this opportunity, the Espinite is November nineteenth for all students and families in the class of twenty twenty-six, stay tuned for more information, and the makeup picture day is October twenty-third. And then at the middle school, they had a very successful parent-teacher conference, and they had a lot of families in the building, and a lot of great conversations. On Wednesday, October fifteenth, RMS proposed the National White Collage Project, and we'll be talking to our students about cyber safety in the first of four interval sessions, this will be facilitated by Richmond grad Norm Gibson. Our amazing RMS PTO is gearing up for this year's Boo Bash, which will be held on Friday, October twenty-fourth, fourth and fifth grade will begin at three o'clock, and sixth and eighth grade, sixth through eighth graders will be, begin at five o'clock, and then the next PTO meeting is Monday, October twentieth, at three o'clock.
For the Lee School, with the approval of the state budget, we will officially open up our mid-GSRP classroom and the early childhood program, we'll have over eighty students enrolled in our Great Start Readiness Program this year, we will also have a hundred and thirty-one students enrolled in our before and after-school children program, students are always showing a lot of both socially and academically, and we are excited to celebrate Tree for Tree on October thirtieth, we have over thirty trunks signed up, and this is an example of the partnership families have released that, I think you're also going to.
Yes. So are you all.
Yeah.
All together.
Signups for Winchester Sports will be posted in the media center later this week. For this week in athletics, we have home middle school volleyball game versus Cross Lex, and then tonight was the home boys soccer MHSAA district semifinals, we played Emily City, Cross Lex, and Almont, Emily City was a loss of four to, Trent said it was an amazing game. And then Tuesday, we have a home middle school and varsity cross-country B-Rac meet, meet number three, and we have JV and varsity volleyball match versus North Branch, on Wednesday, we have a way middle school volleyball versus Yale match, and a home boys soccer MHAA district finals. For Thursday, we have a way middle school and JV football versus Almanac, and a home JV volleyball versus Chabola Bell. For Friday, we have home varsity football versus Almanac, and we will also be recognizing all of our seniors, football, cheer, cross-country, runners, girl golfers, and band members as a state team, band members will also perform Second Annual Global Show following game, which is always.
Yeah.
Any questions for our students? Thank you very much, Rayce. Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislator, Mr. Bronson.
I'm gonna start with the legislators, as we know, the federal government is still in shutdown, so the impact of that really hasn't yet been felt on the school district. A part is because Title I and IDA funds are funded forward, so the state has those money, and then gives them to us as we spend them. Head Start, which is in a district program, and we do house it, and it has a lot of our families in it, is, their grand allocation will remain a place at open, but there are questions of the long-term ability, probably the biggest thing is the staff, the food sector, that fits, are going to start affecting some of our, our families. I don't have the federal, at the state level, well, after months of gridlock, going past the July first deadline, that's all holding up, we have a budget, and it's depending on which newspaper article you read, or who's giving the article, it's, it's, you know, the best budget in history, you know, when I hear those comments, I just think, every year, we have more student population, and we have more income in the state, it's always going to be historical budget every year given out, especially if you give any increase. But some of the things that are happening with that, there is already a lawsuit that has filed against legislators regarding the twenty-four percent increase on the marijuana tax, which in the big scheme of things is helping pay for the roads, so we're kind of watching that, because if that goes through and is ruled unconstitutional because of the two-thirds majority of vote needed to amend the Constitution, and there's a lot of facets, where are they getting that money for to backfill if that goes, it's just on our radar. There's a lot of things, I think, no group got what they wanted, and I think every group is paying for the pains, so from the education perspective, they are, our foundation allowance is raised to ten thousand fifty dollars, which is an increase of four hundred and forty-two dollars per pupil, they continue the transportation costs, which we get providing transit, it helps offset our transportation cost, and the free meals for all was continued. On the flip side, was disarming of another four hundred million is going out of the school aid fund to pay for colleges and universities, which equates to about one point two billion are being removed out of the school aid to pay for colleges and universities, again, it's the shuffling of money, so they freed up the general fund, put that into roads, and now the school aid fund's picking up more of that. I sent the board out, kind of a House Fiscal Agency, it's on the website of the House Fiscal Agency, if anybody wants it, but our impact, we don't get twenty-two C-section, which is out of formal payments, there's no impact in the district, twenty-two D, which is a rural district, we don't qualify for that, our foundation allowance increased based on old numbers, not our current enrollment, they're projecting that to be about a six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase, our thirty-one A is expected to go up to a hundred and twenty-four thousand, we lose thirty-one J, which is the local produce, we lose about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that, thirty-one AA, mental health has gone up, I'm gonna come back to that one in a minute, there's a decrease in the early literacy, which we've had thirty-five A in the past, there's basically twenty-two thousand is gone, they're not funding that, our bilingual goes up a little, special ed goes up about eighteen thousand, and our CT six-one A goes up about sixty-three hundred dollars, so CT initiatives, to get kids to be kind of complete or sufficient, goes up, ninety-nine H, which is the robotics, we get another four hundred and forty-one dollars, that doesn't even cover our robotics costs in the current grant, and the one forty-seven, which was, has been here since two thousand thirteen, basically it's about one percent of our payroll cost, they send us the money to offset the retirement cost, they've eliminated that, so we still have the expense, but we've now eliminated the revenue to cover that, which is a total of about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, so when you look at the pluses and minuses of everything, yeah, it looks on paper like we're ahead, however, there's a lot still concerning, and that we're watching, one forty-seven, the Mifters, as I said, we lost the revenue, but we still have the expense, then what they did is they took and they raised our expense that employer pays from a point eight percent, which is one forty-seven, to a one point eight, so now we've added another percent of that, so when you look at our net cost off the top, it's slowly dwindling. Thirty-one A, there's some new reporting requirements, we're watching that, I don't know what that is, the guidance hasn't been released yet, thirty-one AA, there's, you have to sign, and then it's going to be open, I believe it's November, we have to sign by the allocation, but basically, we have to commit that if we're taking these funds, that we basically waive our right to not have the state come in and do an investigation, should something tragic happen like the Knox, or you probably saw the news, that the states wanted to do this, but they had other companies coming in, and many people, there, you know, there's some, because legal concerns from a district perspective, now we're dealing with our insurance, and what our liability is going to be on insurance, insurance rates covered, the governmental immunity that many of us have been given, is all calling into question now, again, I don't know where that one is, we're, we're watching that, I'm sure that's going to challenge the court. There's a twenty-one I, which is a supplemental that they passed, which is basically a two hundred billion dollars in state appropriation for employee payments, basically what they're, what they're, they're paying for some of the cost, the normal increases in retirement costs, but more of the burden is fall, in this budget, more of the burden is falling on the districts to pick up those additional costs, so we're just watching. Like I said, I shared with you guys the email, what I just read, the House Fiscal Agency shows it, I think it shows us as a net hundred, seven hundred and forty-five thousand in the positive, when you add out, we still have the hundred and eighteen thousand dollar expense, and now we have another hundred and eighteen thousand, and the one percent on, you start adding some of these other things, my quick math when I did it today was where our revenue should exceed our expenses by forty-five thousand dollars, again, we covered all the counter costs and all that, but just, it's not as glamorous as some people are portraying it, because we're all paying, and I was at a, city of Richmond Township, and Jeff White was here, and he was talking about the impact on Richmond Lennox EMS particularly, and how the state hasn't funded reimbursements from a previous vendor who didn't pay their bills and reimbursed them, but they still had to pick up patients, and they pick up the costs, and they are feeling, feeling the pain too, in this budget. From a district level, since our last board, we had Homecoming, I think it was a great week, uneventful is what I like to hear, no issues at pro, or to the dance, at Homecoming Dance, special co-odons, thanks to Mrs. Abel, Mrs. Bullwork, and Mr. Trent for all that, what they do in the logistic, Mrs. Spencer, student government advisor, took a lot of time and energy, Mrs. Shagna, Mrs. Christensen, and Mr. Delor, and Mrs. Lemon, all the class advisors. Mrs. Shagna, Mrs. Christensen, and Mr. Delor, and Mrs. Lemon, all the class advisors with the floats building. We got Mrs. Kramp that who gave a lot of her time, and really the entire staff in student body, it was a, it was a great week. Comedy with the Hall of Honor, which was already mentioned. I also wanna give a special thank out, Margaret and the foundation for the Hall of Honor, and Preston in the athletic nomination, there's a lot that goes into the picking and choosing that, a lot of thought and criteria. But I too also wanna thank Cynthia, she does a lot of behind the scenes that people don't even realize that just happens and so forth. Since our last board meeting, we had see you at the polls, I thought it was pretty, pretty well attended. We had kids of the middle school and high school attending, eight at the high school, six at the middle school, I believe. So again, this was a student-led initiative, we're gonna support it if the kids are wanting to do it, but really kinda putting the onus on them to make this what it can be. On the 24th, we had the B-WAC Summit here, we hosted all the B-WAC districts here. I did ask Mr. Trent to come to the November 10th board meeting, do a B-WAC Summit presentation and bring some of the student athletes that participated. It really was focusing on sportsmanship. Hopefully at that one, they're, they're creating, each, each district is creating a part of video that's gonna be spliced together by our TV production class, and then it can be shown at like in the cafeteria on the screen during basketball games, so, but it really talks about sportsmanship and it's, everybody has a role in good sportsmanship. They also did, they talked about our code of ethics and conduct that in the B-WAC was many years ago, and they kind of revisited, so that will come in November. Again, Mr. Trent, thank you, Cynthia, Courtney, and the meals, behind the scenes, we had a lot of good positives from the other districts. September 30th, we had a Bridge Magazine conversation, some of the board members here were able to go to that, but it was really cool, the Bridge Magazine, if you don't know about Bridge, it's a, the state's largest nonprofit news organization, they try to provide journalism and civic, just factual information, both sides of the story. We had conversations on key issues affecting our community from education, government, housing, employment, about two hour, half, two hours long, but it was really good. And so they're, they're, they're going around to various parts of the state to hold these forms. Richmond was selected, and then I'm assuming at some point it's into some article about their, all, all leading up really to the governor's election next November. October 2nd, we had some of our new staff members, the newly appointed staff members go to the behavioral threat assessment. If you recall, part of the budget is, requires us to have this, we've had this for years as a county. Last year, we were fully, everybody who would need to be part of it was trained. Again, this year, we have new staff members and new appointments, they went to their training. Parent-teacher conference were, I felt very impressive this year, we chose a little different in the 12 and 7 model, kind of the teachers have a flexible dinnertime that they can do. Numbers look good in terms of enrollment, which typically will fall for parent participation is higher. Tomorrow, we have staff going to the reification training, but again, new to their position or new to their district. We trained all of our staff a year ago. We're actually, Richmond, Preston, and I are presenting to the county on November 11th, on what we did in reification, because we are far ahead of any district in the Columbia County. So we're, we're, that group is the county's safety liaison officers, a little law enforcement from every police agency that represents a district in Columbia County, so. This Friday is our music performances, is during the day, so the middle, fourth and fifth grade will be first and second hour, and then second, kindergarten, third will be after lunch or after 11:30. Mrs. Smith, I'm a music teacher, I am very excited to see what she does, she's got a lot of energy and she's very excited, so. There's conversations about doing a supplemental night one coming up, we're still working on logistics, but she's going full force in this and good for her, good for our kids. Audit, at the November 10th meeting, Yoh and Yoh will be here to present our audit. We have a statutory deadline on November 1st to submit it. Just so you know that because of the guidance that the federal legislation's kind of early from an auditing perspective, it's kind of up in limbo, we have to do a general audit and a single audit. Our single audit's a kind of sample of one group, for us, it's typically special ed or Title I, it's the largest money we get. The guidance hasn't been released on that, so what the state has passed in this budget that they just did is, you're probably gonna get the audit, but not the single audit, the single audit will come within 30 days after the final guidance is released. So we could have it on the 10th, but you might have just the normal audit. The auditors have completed their, their process. There's no issues that have been found at this point, but they have finalized their product or their, their, their final numbers. You approved a budget in June that showed 230,000 out of fund balance, preliminary numbers that is gone, we're actually putting a little into fund balance, we're always more conservative, we wanna make sure the money's there so if things come up or things need to be reclassifieded, but it will not be putting, taking 230 out of fund, it'll be closer to that zero mark. I think I ballparked when I said about $100,000, food less than $100,000, but it's not gonna be tied back. And then finally, the bond proposal, it's, it's coming up, there's groups out there that they're driven around town, that have a positive message, a OBS campaign, so you see, you can see that around it. I just keep encouraging people, ask your questions, get the information, don't rely on necessarily what you're reading on a social media post, cause we've seen a lot of corrections and try to get that out there. I think the biggest thing that people are, at least for my perspective, is the no increase. And we've been very specific how we phrased it, no increase over the current rate, July 2025 rate. If voters are willing to continue that rate, then we would get 50, we would generate 51.8 million, and they won't be paying anymore in the rate. There is, in the past two years, we've had a decrease, and if nothing happens, there would be a decrease next July. I just wanna, there's been people out there saying that we've been misleading, that we've not, we've been very specific in everything we've done to make sure we say, over the July 25 rate, we're asking to continue. And even the charts that we've shown, there is public knowledge, we've done the vision, all of it's on the website, so. Again, absentee ballots are out, people have started, started voting, was trying to get the best delta for the remaining, we're going on November 4th to vote, to get them in, everything, make it informed at this, and that's all I have.
I have a question in regards to the budget. Have you heard anything about like, like as far as like the meals, the breakfast and lunch or whatever, are they even a back pay for the, the month, there was no budget?
So they're, they're paying from October 1 to September 30, that's what the budget did. Last year's budget paid from October 1 to September 30, so there's no.
So there's no gap?
No gap.
Okay, good.
Over the budget.
My question, right, was kind of along the way, but are you or have you sent anything out to families confirming that the free meals are? Cause I think we left it with the community as, for now, I just think that might.
I'll get, I'll get something else. I'm trying to think, I don't think that lasts, I don't think, before the end of the week, I'll have something else.
Yeah, probably we left it.
Yeah.
We're waiting, we're waiting, probably.
So, so now that there has been, you know, the budget has been asked, is there going to be another budget change from what we approved in June then at some point for us?
Right now, my conversation with Tam is we're shooting for November 10th to do an amendment with November 24th, the approval, and so that amendment, we're taking into consideration, we won't be known, so if we're gonna get X number of dollars in 31A, or of course, what we were getting here in 31AA, we'll use the numbers that we did on count day, we believe our audit would be in the per pupil and do a blended from last February, so that's our plan right now. The one thing that we are not 100% sure on is all the retirement in that. We know of some of them that we're not gonna get this revenue, we got a budget 1%. We've already put staff, Angela's wonderful at this, we already got the staff, account for their cost. We already count the, the insurance caps going up or the hard cap going, so that part is done, we've been just waiting on the state. We got a couple things, we've had some staff go, or we had to put an extra pair of pro, we've got a unique situation that ran the bill into the budget, but the bulk of it is done. And so now that we have this, we're just dumping the revenue. That's our plan, is the November 10th, is a budget amendment.
That was gonna be my question too, I, I can't remember, how many things were leaving up on that? There were a couple things that were waiting to.
There's, there's impacts, but we're gonna make, based on the assumptions from the House, and again, I don't know on some, like, like the transportation, a good example, they're estimating that we're gonna still get those dollars, but if our numbers are up, then we should actually get more dollars. But we're basing it on right now theirs until we get really that audit number. When we look at the per pupil, it's kind of a twofold, we got the per pupil, and they're assuming that we're levying the non-home set, well, we had some, had the rollbacks, we're not levying the full, so we've got to do those calculate, and it's very complicated, but we're in a good spot in terms of what we know our expenses are, now we're putting the revenue for what we know and safely assume that we're gonna get.
And then one comment I have too about the, I'm sorry, the proposal, something that I keep hearing is that the information we're sharing is proposed a lot of increase of students, but they're missing that we, we have already even this year had a large increase of students. So they're not, they're not hearing that for some reason, so Cynthia seemed shocked when I told them about that, that there's been other information, is really talking about the projection.
Well, I've had people talk to me about that projection, where are you getting that number from? And I just pointed out, there's two things, like Angeles is half full, so when that gets full, there's gonna be kids. You've got Swan Creek Development, the infrastructure, there's 47 houses there that are possibly, again, I speak to nice level a couple times, there is, I think, 10 lots that still aren't sold. There's a lot of young kids over there, those kids, those families are expected to stay here, so that's where a lot of this is coming from. And then, morbid side of me, sorry, but as people pass on, their house is gonna go to someone else. And the odds are, and suggestively, that's gonna go to someone with kids who's moving up. Not always, but suggestively, that's generally what happens.
But you can also make the argument, though, too, Ken, is that when someone talks to you about the projections, what the reality is, with what we have right here, we're full. You know what I'm saying? And so when you just talk about the GSRP, that whole, now, all those kids that are here, we're full in those buildings, you know what I mean? So that, that's a conversation to have too, that we'll look at with what we have, and as they move from this building to here, we go from elementary to middle school, and middle school's full, you know? So, yeah, there's.
And the comment that I've had of people in middle school is, if I get to a number in fourth grade where let's add a sixth section, I physically have nowhere to add, so my only recourse immediately is raising class size. Long-term, we can look at things, and again, I don't wanna speculate, cause I don't want it going in a different direction, but we've gotta figure out a solution there, if it doesn't pass, we don't have the addition. But basically, we're running out of room.
I think, Ken, is what I think you were saying too, is that as we are out there, cause we're going tomorrow night to Columbus Township, to stress that this year alone, we're up how many?
That's, yes, they need to hear that this year is already a whole classroom plus.
And I think that's part of the reason why we started putting these on the board back, is you had to have sense as a board member each, every week, what our numbers are.
Or is it maybe a more two? Could mean, could mean a cluster, right? It was the number. And is it tomorrow, Casco?
With Casco and Columbus.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to Columbus, cause I went to Casco last time.
So is somebody going to Casco?
I don't remember.
Are you going? Okay, you're going to Casco.
That's why I said.
Okay, yeah, cause I knew that we're gonna go to Columbus. So, okay. Any other questions or stuff with Mr. Bronson? Next item on our agenda is items of interest. Margaret?
Bear with me, I'm gonna climb on my soapbox for a second, but it was brought to my attention, oh, maybe a little over a week ago, on the dreaded social media, that there were comments about our transportation department, and I quote, "The busing system at Richmond is a hot mess." And there were comments made, buses be on full, routes are one and a half to two hours long, the drivers are really tough and hard and mean to the kids, so that just bothered me, so I'm gonna climb on my soapbox for a second. Hotness. In the last five years, we have purchased nine new buses, added to our fleet, to, at the cost of over $1 million. In the last four years, the 2020 to 2024 school years, 100% of our buses have gotten green tags, which means, you know, they're good when they get inspected. And in the 2425 school year, one bus was red tagged, and it was red tagged, but then got fixed and was able to get out on the road, so. So the buses that we use are all good to go, and even those that sit, that are not being used right now, those are all green tagged, good to go, they can go out on the road at any time. We are a district of 71.387 square miles, and in the 2425 school year, our bus drivers drove over 110,000 miles. The buses, on average, are 18 tons, 77 passenger vehicle buses. The comment that our bus drivers are really tough and hard on the kids, I find that to just be so interesting in times when I've seen our bus drivers interact with kids, they're pretty joyful for the fact that they are taking a bunch of kids on an 18-ton, 77-passenger vehicle, driving kids that probably most of us would not want to be driving. And about how long that it takes our kids to be on these buses, the last bus, I believe, Brian Leesley scheduled at 2:50, and if you ever go by this school at 2:50, and you see the thousands of cars that are there picking up kids as well as the buses, and at an elementary building when, oh, maybe Jimmy forgot his lunchbox or his coat, he's gotta go back in the room, or he has to go to the bathroom, and the bus driver doesn't drive away and leave that kid behind, or problem in a classroom, or the kid goes to latchkey, instead of getting on his bus, and the bus pulls away, but the bus comes back to get the kid. That could be maybe why the bus is taking a little bit longer to get your kid home from school. Our bus drivers are the first greeters of our students in the morning, and coming out of homes, who knows what's going on in the house? Who knows whether they've had an argument with mom or dad, or they couldn't find the clothes they wanted to wear that day, and they get on that bus, and that bus driver's the first one to greet them and get them safely to school, and maybe to let the school know that that kid has a little bit of a problem. They're driving in all kinds of weather, on our back roads. Maybe, maybe they're driving down the road, in an instance that I came upon about two weeks ago on my road, when I came upon the bus, she had a red light flashing, and then it went to yellow, and then the light stopped, and I pulled up, and I asked the driver, was everything okay? And she said that she was just waiting because the child, the mom wasn't there at the end of the driveway to pick up the child, that was my neighbors, and so I said, oh, you want me, you know, I know our mom comes home from work about this time, I could give her a call. No, no, you know, we're calling, we're checking, so they're waiting on the road, so this mom, who's running late from work, could get to her house to get her kid, get her off the bus. Maybe that's what made your child, the people that were writing all the bad stuff about our buses, maybe so. our buses, maybe so that they were helping that parent, so that parent didn't have to chase down their kid or go to the transportation department. Maybe just think about that, that you don't know what's going on in the bus and that our buses were beyond full. I guess if you pay attention to board meetings, our superintendent, our transportation director, who are working very hard to try to get bus drivers, it's very hard to get drivers, and they came up with an idea and the board approved, two meetings ago, I think it was, two or three meetings ago, to hire the outside service to get us some drivers. And then we split up a rub, correct? So that we could make maybe not as many kids on a bus. So I'm going to climb off my soapbox, but we have an excellent transportation department. We have great bus drivers. They are great people. They care about our kids. They work really, really hard. And I just say, if you don't like how the busing is going, we've got applications, right, Brian? Get yourself a CDL, drive an 18-ton bus with 77 kids on it, and then tell me what's a hot mess. Okay, Margaret? Thank you.
Raymond?
Yeah, just to reiterate about the bond proposal, a lot of the community's concerns. I've heard conversations about, you know, right, I've seen on social media, there's concerns about, oh, well, the district's not being honest, you know, your taxes are going to go up in the increase. I just, I just want to implore the community to go to the school district website, research the information, look at what's been put out by the district and by Brian's superintendent, and just do the homework. Try not to depend on what you're seeing on social media, but do the homework yourself and look at the actual information. I think all the answers will be there. I think it's pretty well laid out. So I just, I just want to encourage community members to research that and to look at that information.
Thank you. Danielle? How was that? Sandy?
So I just, going to bring up again, that we talked about the appreciation event and selecting the committee to getting that plan out.
Oh, no, I haven't actually, so I need to...
So I don't know if you guys want to do that now? Could do it the next week. Obviously, it's not a rush right now, but I mean, if you could get it on, I don't know.
You could volunteer after the meeting's over. You could just get into it and whoever else wants it.
Okay.
Or, again. How about if I, I will let Mr. Wamsley know right now and put it on the agenda for our next meeting?
I don't know if that's more on the agenda for a meeting. I think that it's something that we can, we can talk about.
I will say no. I don't know if this is what...
Okay, yeah, let's just get, let's just get it.
Okay, we'll talk afterwards. We'll see who wants to do it.
We're watching, hold it. I will get on it. Whoever wants to do it or help me out, please let me know.
Yes.
Some other time. Thank you. I love her there too.
Girl. Thank you, Sandy.
Girl.
Candace?
I don't have much other than I'm super excited to go to the MSBA concert or conference in two weeks and learn lots about board stuff. Also, the...
Sarah?
No.
I too will be heading with Candace up to Trap City for our conference. I'm looking forward to, I can't wait to hear the legislative and the budget talks. See where that's at. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, the board did receive an email from a parent concerning services for their special needs child. This email was forwarded on to Mr. Wamsley, who dealt with the issue with our special education department. We did have one public comment at our last regular board meeting. The person did not indicate that they wanted to be contacted by signing on the sheet. So I just wanted to let the community know that Mr. Wamsley did send out an email to the entire staff sharing their concern. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. You have three minutes. Please sign in and state your name. If you wish a follow-up, please provide the contact information on the public comment sheet. Are there any public comments?
Edward Tauswitz, M19, Richmond. I just wanted to thank Mr. Wamsley for all the information he put out there for the prayer at the polls. And I don't want to disagree with you, but there's probably twice as many people in each poll from what I, I was at middle school and pastor from our church was at Edwin. And we were very, very, very pleased and thankful for them. And it was raining at the time, how much rain did we have? It was raining that morning at that time. So it was encouraging because I think I only had like five kids last year. So your input of publishing had obviously helped to bring more people out. So maybe we continue to have that grow. And the youth for Price group on Thursdays is growing as well, so it's good. We need all we can get, the positiveness for our schools and system. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is our action items. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the board policies.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached board policies as presented on September 8, 2025, and outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to make you, in front of you, have the two corrections on the date that Sarah brought up in a previous meeting. So I want to mention that, that will be the difference from the...
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Hi.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Nay.
Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the Sabbath's My View purchase.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of Sabbath's My View K5 BLA resources that exceed $34,292.16, from which funding from Section 23G and Section 37J grant funds is authorized and outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
This is pretty much just using up our grants from last year. It's not any new money.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the purchase of a piano.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of four pianos from Kawai Piano Gallery of Michigan for a amount not to exceed $21,832, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Margaret, was that you?
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, well, we'll adjourn these in a moment. It's one for every building, one for every space as well as the second, the brand, 12 five total.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Sarah?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for an overnight extended student trip to Lansing.
I motion accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight extended trip to Lansing, Michigan on November 13 through 14, 2025, as presented at the October 13 Board of Education, and outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion?
Should that say DECA in there somewhere? Or is it, is it just because it says Lansing that that...
The back of it's DECA.
Okay, okay. That's good, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the authorization to vote on behalf of the Richmond Community Schools at M.A.S.B.A. Delegate Assembly.
It's M.A.S.B. De... B.
Sorry, M.A.S.B. It's late in the night.
I, I move to authorize board member Michelle to cast the Richmond Board of Education's vote at the M.A.S.B. Delegate Assembly and support the proposed resolution amendments recommended by the M.A.S.B. 2024, 2025 resolutions and by laws committee, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I think I can vote. I'm voting aye. That vote, aye, motion carries. Being no further business, the board will adjourn at 10:41.